Good evening and welcome to the 13th meeting of Fiscal 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members and our staff.
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie O'Phill, Member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. I would also, I'm not sure if Sean is remote, but he may be joining us in a little bit. Now introductions for our staff. Tim?
Tim Zierwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Josh?
Josh Eckert, Assistant Director.
Julia?
Julia Getzler.
And our consultant tonight's joining us is Tim Riordan from Tetra Tech. Sean Riordan, yes, Sean Riordan from Tetra Tech. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for joining us. We'll first begin with our administrative items. We have a couple of minutes, sets of minutes to approve. And those would be October 12th, the 19th, 24th, and the 26th. Have the members had an opportunity to review those minutes?
I did, I'm set with them.
I am, I am fine with them as well.
So a motion to approve? Minutes, second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Great, thank you. And discussion of next minute dates. We would typically have our next meeting scheduled for November 16th. But we have a consultant, RKG, who we are, would like to join us for a fiscal impact analysis. And Tim, it looks like the, the date that most could make it is on November 28th. Is that correct?
Yeah, Meredith, the issue is actually that the next scheduled meeting would have been on Thanksgiving. So we tried to back in from there of when RKG would be available. They're not available on the 16th. I think the sort of the proposed dates were the 20th, the 21st, the 22nd, and then the 28th and the 29th. The 28th was the consensus date, so if that's amenable to everybody, we can, we can set a meeting for them.
I'm with me.
Does that work for the 28th? Yes. Okay, Tim, let's set that up for the 28th. And hopefully Sean.
Before town meeting on the 4th? I think we might want to at least.
Yeah, if we want, why don't we just, Tim, yeah, can you make it?
We'll make sure, we'll make sure you've got a room and a meeting posted like we typically do, so that'll be.
Julia's already on top of it. She said we have, or Lynn's on top of it. We have her room. So there will be.
A hundred steps ahead of us.
Great, so December 4th.
And then after that, just so folks know, when the next meeting would be in December.
That's what, the 14th would be our next scheduled meeting. And I'm not sure if we will, if it will be necessary to have a meeting because that is right at the holidays.
But then we have these hearings that are going to be continued.
Yeah, and I talked to, we'll, we'll talk tonight on what, what the availability is. But we, when Ned comes with his group, we'll see if the 28th works for November because we could also do, have that hearing continued until when RKG comes. I don't know, but you can discuss that with your folks. So the 28th and December 4th, prior to town meeting, and then December 14th are the next scheduled, unless we need something additional. Okay, and Tim, an update?
Yeah, you know, again, just getting ready for town meeting, but I, I think a lot of you were there for our kind of kickoff public forum for the East Milton Overlay Zoning effort on Monday over at the Milton Arts Center. I thought that meeting went very well. We got a lot of good input from folks. I think MAPC ran a really good meeting and it was very, I think the, the density of information that we were able to sort of get from that group, I, I think was very good and very helpful. So there is a, the, the same kind of survey questions that were administered at the meeting are available on, Josh, is that website off the planning board page or off the department page?
It's off of the planning board page.
Yeah, so the planning board page will have an East Milton zoning overlay website. So again, that recording, that presentation will all be up, and then there's a link to the survey. You know, folks should feel welcome to, to take it. You know, we're going to try to, you know, obviously disseminate that through all of the usual means. I haven't had a chance to reach out to the Neighbor Association yet, but we'll do that, make sure that's directly in their hands. You know, but it is, it is a survey that's open to sort of all Milton residents. There's, there are questions about that, you know, do you go there for business? Do you go there to eat? Do you live there? So we wanted, you know, got kind of, you know, cast a broad net, but obviously, you know, pay particular attention to, you know, obviously the surrounding neighborhood. But um, so I, I think that was a great start to the public process for that. And we'll hopefully be hearing from MAPC, probably not before the end of the year, although, although maybe, you know, with kind of a, kind of a compendium of all the information that they were able to get from not just the meeting, but also some interviews that they've been doing with stakeholders over the course of the past few weeks. So I thought it was a pretty good success. That's it for now. Josh, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to share from any of the committees that you're staffing.
Just to say that next Tuesday, the Governor Stone Trust/Select Board is going to be considering an updated RFP for the Town Farm property. So hopefully we'll be moving forward with that and expecting it to sort of hit the central register by the end of this month. So that work is progressing well. And to the East Milton survey as well, we've got paper copies of the survey in the planning board office, and the survey itself is embedded on the webpage, so folks can stay on thetownmilton.org and fill out that survey. We try to make it as accessible as possible.
Thank you, Josh. And will that RFP be available for, I know neighbors are very interested, you know, there's some historic properties up there. Will those, will that updated RFP be available before voted on?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be in the meeting materials for the Select Board's meeting.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. All right. We can now open it up for Citizens Speak. If there's anyone who would like to speak to anything, you will have time during the public hearings to also speak to the board on, on that particular item. But if there's something else that anybody would like to come and speak on, please welcome. If you could just state your name and address for the record, it'd be great.
Just gonna pass, pass those down if, if you would, yeah.
Sure.
And I'm just gonna talk a little bit about it. Joseph Curran, Grafton Ave. I sent a communication to the board earlier this week. I, I did have a chance to actually download the presentation that was presented to, to, to the residents of East Milton. And I, I brought that along with some markups because I just, I was concerned about some of the stuff that was presented to us. And I guess I'll, I'll start with, I know that I attended the 2015 meeting where we talked about plans for East Milton. I know that there was a 2021 study that was completed that was talked about at the planning board, and I believe the select board, never been presented to anybody in East Milton. So that when we got to this part of this, I thought that that was what we were going to talk about. And then I was surprised that just the, I felt it was very technical. And then I thought the slides were very confusing, which I kind of put into the information I sent to you. And I guess I'll just start by, if you, if you, if you wanna, and I'm going to try to stay to three minutes, right? I numbered the pages and I tried to combine stuff. I was trying to be as green as I could be, but, but wanted to make sure I made my point. On the page two that you see in front of you, I just felt that the entire presentation presented dense projects. And I was in the 2015 meeting, I felt that there were people who wanted a village-like atmosphere. I, I've never read the 2021 report, so I don't know what's in it. And so when I saw one of the images, it just shows the two massive buildings that are, one is, both of them have been approved. I didn't see any village-like presentation at all. You know, it showed the existing town of Milton and, and the buildings. I didn't put in the Elliott Street building because I, in the conversations that we had back in 2015, everybody said that was something that they were interested in seeing. If you go to page three, I just marked up where the existing business district is because when I looked at the map, most people don't know where the business district is. I'm very familiar with where the business district is. It's in my neighborhood, right? And so I just felt that it, it really didn't identify that, that very well. And, and I, you know, I marked up some notes there for you, for, for you guys to kind of read. On page four, I, again, I'm just marking up of stuff. You know, there, there are indications of where multifamily housing is in, in East Milton Square right now. And when I look at this, it doesn't show any of the multifamily housing that exists on, on Edgell Road, on Grafton Ave, on Plymouth Ave, on Hollis Street. But, and it just seemed very disorganized in, in terms of that. And to me, the, the locations of those houses is, is important. In the upper left-hand corner, it shows a yellow dot which indicates that it's a residential two-family use. I know that it used to be an abandoned car dealership and it's been an office building since the eighties, so I just didn't understand why it was like that. And it's also identifying the Hoy businesses as, as a multifamily. And again, it's mixed, it's mixed use. And to me, when I watched this presentation, that's kind of what we're talking about is a village or, or a transition, and specifically Martin Terrace and Grafton Ave are a transition. And, and to me, that's some of what you're, you're looking kind of to do. Page five, I just, I just put it in there because it was in the presentation, and I just try to keep all those large images similar to each other and, and try to express that I thought that, you know, you should identify where the existing business district is because I, again, there's a lot of not businesses outside the district. And I actually would have liked to have seen more of a codification of all of those first and a discussion about where the business district is going to go before this presentation was made because it basically says this is where it's going. At least that, that's what I, I, I pulled out of it. And that's pretty typical through, through the rest of what I kind of marked up here and a lot of different colors and lots of different places. And I, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm confused as to whether or not two Grafton Ave is in proposed business district or not. As you look through the presentation, sometimes it's red, sometimes it's, it's, it's not red. And I don't think anybody has ever talked to anybody on Grafton Ave about the expansion of it. I know my neighbors didn't know anything about it until I alerted them back in 2021 about, about the, the potential of that. And then there's just the existing boundaries, if, if you, and again, it shows two different, two Grafton Ave and paid on page 11, and it's not in the business district now. And then on page 13, again, it shows all these buildings, right? There again, there are no village-like buildings presented. And when we talk about, if I flip back to page 12, we talk about, and I put these in there, mixed-use transitional, mixed-use center district, mixed-use gateway sub-district, and it has a bunch of words. There are no images. I don't know what that is. I, I, you know, and, and when I'm trying to follow along, you know, and I read the words, it's just, I would have thought that there would have been some more discussion about that. And again, my idea from what I, what I heard in 2015 was, was some village-like images and, and Hingham Center is probably a, a great example of a village type. And it, and it, it's different than East Milton in that it has a train that goes through it instead of a major highway. But to me, it's, it's similar. And, you know, I just gave some, some samples of what I consider to be village-like locations.
Sorry, where did you say that you, you gave your examples of village?
Oh, it's on page 13. I didn't give photos, I just gave words.
No, it's okay, I just want to make sure I know where they are.
Yeah, Hingham Center, I, I don't know if people are familiar with it, Hyannis, Plymouth, you know, and again, some of those areas are a little more built up, right? I think I like Hingham, but I'm not trying to drive the, the discussion in a particular way, but I just, I mean, this is my chance to talk about it, so, so that's, that's what I wanted to kind of just, just reference for everybody. Lot of, lot of photos, lots of colors. I think for the audience, it was, it was a little complicated and a little too technical. And I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, if, if I don't run out of time, I do want to talk about the survey. Let me just see like some of the other pages. And then I, I, when we get to, let's say, page 19, which again is just, I just try to put the, all the slides on one page, just make, make it easy. All of these slides, again, show dense urban downtown locations, yet we have three different sub-districts. I would have thought that you would include something other than what I'm seeing here, which is really high-rise buildings, even, and I know the consultant picked it, the, the proposed maybe building that's going to go in East Milton above Citizens Bank, that's another large, you know, large building. So I just, I just thought that the images, I'm a visual person, I like to see images so that I can study them. And, you know, I've shared this with you, I marked up the other presentation just because I thought it was also, there was some opportunities, opportunities in it. And then, you know, I looked at the, the questionnaire. I think I would have added a QR code to make it easier for people because I had people around me trying to access it. I don't know if you can do a QR code, but when you're trying to help multiple people, it, it makes it, it makes it a little bit easier. And then, and I did not, I'm sorry, I didn't make copies of, of, of this, but three I, density is kind of referenced in the, the first three times. And, and again, I'm thinking that we're trying to maybe avoid density or at least have more discussion about it, but I, I really feel that people don't want density. And then when we talk about parking, the, the first five questions are remove or reduce parking. I think the, the opportunities in, in East Milton are, some of them are probably, I don't know if they're ever solvable, but we have density, we have parking, and we have traffic. Traffic I don't think is going to be solvable. I think the parking, you know, some sort of a understanding of what the existing parking is, especially if we're going to develop and take away more of the lots that are down there. I think we need to understand how many spaces are there and, 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 and just try, try to understand it a little bit better. And, and then, you know, there's a whole thing in here about sustainability and it talks about, again, back to the complexity, increase the substantially required green stormwater management, net zero building, or sustainable metrics, right? I, I don't, I think that that's some sort of a catch basin system on the site with overflows into the store. I don't, I, I didn't, I purposely didn't look it up because I didn't want to know what it was before this meeting, but I just didn't understand why when we're trying to collect a lot of data, you're asking lots and lots of questions. And I understand sustainability is important to people, but for that particular forum and the people who were there, it just didn't, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I just thought it was complicated. And then when we went to go vote on the, the images, you know, he displayed an image that wasn't on the sheet. Again, I didn't see any village-type stuff. And, and I know this is now published and posted, and it's probably too late to change it, but I just had to come up and tell you what I thought of the presentation. And I appreciate everything everybody's doing in this room. You people are, are, I have so much on your plate. And when it comes to this East Milton project and the MBTA communities, and I see that the post office and the library aren't included in, in those districts, but then I see them included in this presentation, I get very confused about what's in, what's out. Is it, is it in in this scenario? And then you're, it's going to be added later on? Like, it just, it just was very confusing to me. It was confusing to my neighbors. There were eight of them there, not all of them stayed because it was, they, they just, they thought it was very complex and they wanted to talk about where the district is. And then, and I, I also pulled out the, the community engagement strategy. And again, I'm just going to go back, I live on Grafton Ave, I'm a town meeting member, I, I said this at the meeting, not all of you were there, is I've never been approached, yet the business district is expanding onto my street. I don't know of anybody in my neighborhood who's been approached. I, and I've asked, now, they may have been approached and just don't want to tell me, I don't know, but I think that, that, that it's, that it's interesting because I think the only expansion of the business district, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is two Grafton Ave, right? The rest of it is, is mixed use. So, and, and to me, that is really more one of these mixed transitional areas because it's a two-story building built in the 50s. It's a three- or four-story building built in the 80s. I remember when it was a house in an adjacent lot. The Hoy Law Firm, I remember when people lived there, and now it's mixed use because it's, it's, it's residential and business. The, the brick building is also business and residential, which again, kind of fits into what I was reading through all this. And, and, and so that's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate you allowing me to talk today.
Thank you. And I just want to say, this is not a final, this is nothing on here, this is just a very beginning of, of this process. So there's going to be many opportunities for you to come and speak and share what you've shared, and you've had excellent comments, so thank you.
Yeah, and I did talk to Josh at the consultant.
Good, good.
This week, and I told him some things, and I'm going to reach out to more of my neighbors.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. You know, now that I'm done with it, yes. I am 2830. I am, I'm a multifamily, I'm a, I'm a landlord on Grafton Ave.
Thank you.
Curran, Joseph Curran, town meeting member, 367.
We appreciate your concern and coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Anyone else online or in person here tonight?
We've got a couple of hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, Josh, can you handle that?
Yep, Eric Hovenson has a hand raised. Eric, could you give us your name and address?
Sure, Eric Hovenson, 583 Elliott Street. I, I wanted to talk about MBTA Communities Act, and I know there's a couple of public hearings before that on the agenda. I'm happy to wait or happy to speak now, whatever would be better.
You know what? If you, if you could wait and hold your comments, that would be, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, happy to, thank you.
And speak at that time, yeah. Great, thank you. Any others? Tim? Or Josh?
No others.
That'll look like it.
All right. So with that, we can begin our, reopen our public hearing for 111 Highland Street Special Permit, continued from October 19th.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you.
I'm the board, Ned Corcoran, for the record, representing the North Bridge Companies, the proponent in this episode. And I'm joined tonight by Jesse Alderman, who is a partner at Foley-Hoag, who has, we remain to handle the appeal processes that we know are flowing from what's happening in particular, the appeal that was filed recently, since the last meeting with you.
Ned, can, can I interrupt real quick? Is it possible for you to move that mic a little bit closer?
Yep. Got a little something in my throat that's making it difficult to be heard, apologize. You know, we know since the last, we were last here discussing stormwater with you, DEP, there's been an appeal filed to DEP, appealing the Order of Conditions that was issued by the Conservation Commission. Stormwater is now in the, in the hands of DEP, and we think we ought to be moving on to other issues. The bylaw says that we must comply with stormwater standards. But this board was never the board that had jurisdiction to make the determination whether we were in compliance. That's entirely within, within the purview of, of the Conservation Commission, that's true by statute. They determined we were compliant and issued an order of conditions. That should have been the end of it. We probably shouldn't have engaged in the process that we did more recently, but we're trying to be helpful in educating where things were and how things were moving forward. But we think tonight we need to move on and get to other things. I know you and I discussed fire access and tie to sewer in particular. The goal was to have the, the architect available tonight, but she's unfortunately not available. So if the 28th is the next meeting, that's certainly a night that we can start with.
And if you could just share for the public and the board, now that it's going to DEP, because I completely agree that it's now.
In fact, why don't I have Jesse introduce himself?
Yeah, you want to just sort of tell the board sort of your, the timeline, that you, you know, expectations and, and the process with that?
Sure, sure. For the record, my name's Jesse Alderman. I'm a partner at Foley-Hoag in Boston. I'm the chair of our environmental and land use practice in our administrative law department. I've actually have history with this project. I worked on this project when another neighbor appealed the Order of a Resource Area Delineation as well as a determination of non-applicability to DEP. We won that summarily. It was a, a, a process that unfortunately took several months, as this appeal will. But I've reviewed it, it's baseless. I think on the record, we've had, this project has had six months of review of the state stormwater standards, which are part of the Wetlands Protection Act, under which the jurisdiction for review is given to the Conservation Commission. The Milton Conservation Commission reviewed the, the stormwater proposal and the mitigation offered by the applicant and determined that they applied with the state's stormwater standards. My understanding was that that was peer-reviewed as well, and the peer reviewer reached the same conclusion. Nonetheless, as is the right, neighbors again, for whatever reason, have appealed that further to DEP. DEP regulations under the Wetlands Protection Act set the stormwater standards and incorporate the stormwater handbook. These are that agency's own regulations. Now we will go before the Department of Environmental Protection, and they will issue a superseding order of conditions. A order of conditions that I expect will, in large measure, if not completely, affirm what your Conservation Commission studied and determined was a project that met the standards. Nonetheless, that is now at DEP. DEP will review it de novo, as we lawyers call it. They will review it from start to finish, and they will issue essentially another order of conditions. They call it the, a supersede, and forgive me, I'm sure you all know this already, but for the record, they call it.
Good for everyone to know, yes.
A superseding order of conditions. If there are any changes to our stormwater proposal, those will get incorporated as conditions, as requirements, as legal requirements in that superseding order of conditions, and we will go forward under, that will be the, that superseding order will be applicable to the project, it will be recorded, it will be the order that we must comply with, it'll be one of the five or whatever permits we need to go forward, including the special permit from you. And by all means, that is an independent basis of the law that we'll have to apply by, but you could make it a condition, apply by any new standards that are, that are, or conditions that are imposed by DEP in any superseding or final orders of conditions. But that's, that's really where we are. That is a separate body, those are separate regs, and the state law gives jurisdiction for that determination to the CONCOM, and appeal rights from the CONCOM go to DEP first and then onward from there.
Great, thank you.
I know there was some new materials that were filed recently that want to get at the issue of, of, continue to get at the issue of stormwater compliance. In our opinion, as Jesse says, those are now completely within the purview of DEP and have been lifted out of the jurisdiction of this board to consider. So, and we think as a, as a matter of fact and as a matter of law, we're, we're entitled to have this board rely on the determination made by its sister board with jurisdiction. I also think that you're, that we're entitled to have you rely on the opinions of your expert because he was retained by you to do, to act as your expert. And so we, we believe very strongly that we're entitled to rely on your reliance on, on his opinions. So with that.
We look forward to seeing what that decision is and it's, yeah.
And, and the process with DEP is going to take months. Minimum of six, more likely nine.
Yeah, I mean, the superseding order will come sooner than that if they were to appeal that beyond the superseding order of conditions, you know? These projects, I, I live in the town of Marblehead, where the applicant, North Bridge Communities, just finished after five years of appeals, five years, all the way up to the Massachusetts Appeals Court. And they built a, a beautiful project there, 80-bit facility, memory care, specialized care, independent living, the town's in love with it. Neighbors weren't, as happens when there's change, but I'm telling you, people, my neighbor drove, drove to Danvers, 45 minutes back and forth, hour and a half total through traffic to see, to see his mom, who's now in town, right around the corner. So it's really meets a need, and there will be appeals, it will take time, but, you know, doesn't get built until all the permits and all the appeals are exhausted. And stormwater is one lane, you, you guys have your lane, is, is my respectful view of the situation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. How come then, and maybe it's just a general question, how come, like, we all, we review stormwater plans?
They don't all have wetlands, and not all have CONCOM jurisdiction, and in my tenure on the board, we rely upon peer review or the engineering department. So while the planning board has responsibility, there's, that we, we've realized, we don't have expertise on the board itself, so we rely on the engineering department, and then, you know, on complex projects on outside source engineer peer review.
For example, on Walcott Woods, there was a significant stormwater management plan, but there was, there was almost no CONCOM jurisdiction, so it was a, it did have to be reviewed, it was peer reviewed, and
We had consultants, there were consultants for the
Yeah, but we don't have to. I mean, we, as a board, we have a right to review drainage, correct?
But you're, you would be relying on your town engineer and your DPW.
Right, yep, but we have that right. So what you said, I believe, was that CONCOM is given the jurisdictional right, so I'm just
For wetlands.
For wetlands. And for the stormwater standards, my understanding is, respectfully, that the letter you received is nearly entirely about the state stormwater standards, which are Department of Environmental Protection regulations. Drainage that falls under your general stormwater bylaw, Ned, correct me if I'm wrong, right, is reviewed by the DPW, and that'll, that'll take a sign-off under your permit, but not Wetlands Protection Act, which is nearly the entirety of the letter you received, and I believe what's been discussed prior to my comment on board. Separate issues, you have your, you have your general bylaw, which relates to storm, which relates to stormwater, drainage, something you guys do review, and I believe typically would get a peer reviewer a sign-off from the DPW, and then the wetlands issues. Nearly all of what this, what's at issue with this project is wetlands issues.
So we still have a say in drainage?
Outside, well
Outside of wetlands.
I, I, I think, I mean, one thing to keep in mind, and, and this is to the extent that, you know, the zoning under which the special permit is proceeding, you know, does have a requirement, you know, under, under that zoning, I forget the section, you know, that it does need to demonstrate compliance with the state and local stormwater standards. So I think, you know, how that gets adjudicated, you know, is, is kind of up to the board. But ultimately, I think, you know, what, what Ned is, is saying is that another board with jurisdiction has, has given the thumbs up, and also, you know, your peer reviewer has given, you know, effectively the thumbs up. We've had a meeting, you know, with, with Sean, and then Chase Berkeley and Marina Fernandez, the DPW director and town engineer, you know, they're in the process of drafting up a, a comment letter, you know, effectively affirming that yes, you know, they're, they're in agreement that the project does, you know, comply with the, the state and local stormwater standards. So, you know, to, to, to the effect that it's spelled in suspenders, you know, that may be the case, but, you know, that's kind of where, where we're coming in, kind of from the, the local staff end.
I mean, you have, you absolutely have the right to have that reviewed, but you also have to rely on your experts, because you don't independently have the capacity to determine whether it's compliant. And we have the right to rely on the determinations made by your experts.
I feel like it's akin to when you say you have to require all other permits as a condition of your permit. Doesn't mean you make the determination on those permits, it means the comedy that you have with the other boards with jurisdictions, you're all respecting each other, and the project
Yeah, we have a problem with that here in Milton Lake.
Well, after six months and a peer review, I think that you can have pretty good, and now the Department of Environmental Protection
He is now looking at it.
Yeah, you can have pretty good faith that this stormwater plan is going to get a lot of attention, already has.
That's great, we, that's what we want, so. Thank you very much, I, I appreciate that. So, having said that, I don't know if there was anyone who wanted to address that from the neighbors.
Step aside.
Yeah, if there's anyone from the neighbors who wanted to just address that, and then we'll move, because we do want to move to the sweat path analysis, which was my, I should just say, we're hoping tonight to, to look at the sweat path analysis, and if we have time to talk about the sewer connection. Yep, so Bart, if you
Sure.
Thank you.
This is Bart Hiresai, 11 Spafford Road, nice to see you all tonight. We do have Liz Pyle from Dan Hill's office on the Zoom, I think she was planning to speak tonight, so.
That's what I, it sounded like, I wanted to allow that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, she has her hand raised.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, Josh, if you can.
Yeah, Elizabeth, do you allow me to speak?
Hi, can you, you hear me but you can't see me? Is that what's going on?
Correct, we can, we can hear you clearly, though.
Okay, I don't see a way to turn on a camera here, so it's just, it's just my voice, is that right?
Yes, you're attending, not a
Okay, thank you, I haven't been in this format before. Thanks very much for speaking with me tonight. My name is Elizabeth Pyle, I'm an attorney at Hill Law, and I represent the residents of Spafford Road and Highland Street. We filed letters with you previously, and I submitted a, a letter earlier this week enclosing our consulting engineer's analysis on the stormwater. And I, I do take issue with some of the comments that have been presented to you this evening so far. As the planning board, you do have the right to rely on expert opinions, but it doesn't just have to be your peer reviewer or the town engineer. You can rely on whatever expert opinion you find to be credible and persuasive. And we see this all the time in our practice, where sometimes a board may find that a certain review is inadequate, or that more in-depth and detailed information is provided, and the board is entitled to rely on additional experts, even experts provided to the board by concerned citizens. The board is entitled to rely on public comment, and the board absolutely does have the right to make an independent determination under the bylaw, under the new special care, memory care, residential development zoning bylaw that applies in this case. Section nine says, and I quote, "The stormwater management system shall meet all applicable provisions of the DEP's stormwater management guidelines and regulations." So that very much is your authority to decide, and I don't think that the board should just punt to the Conservation Commission on this issue, where those proceedings were closed hurriedly, and we did not have an opportunity to raise the issues that are before you now. So I'm glad to hear that the town is going, that, that the peer reviewer is going to take a look at the comments that I know we just provided two days ago, but I would ask that you take a hard look at them and reconsider the stormwater design based on the problems that we've raised with this, with this very tight site surrounded by wetlands. And I will say also that I know that Scott Horstley is also on the Zoom tonight, and that he would like to address the board this evening as well.
Great, thank you, Elizabeth, yes. Can we let Scott in?
Scott is in, you have his permission to speak.
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Is it possible to show a couple slides, share my screen?
Yes, give me. Josh?
I think Josh will have to, will have to promote
Yeah, I'm promoting him.
There we go, I'm sorry, I was not, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, thank you.
Can you see, can you see this slide okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'll be, I'll be very brief. So just want to remind the board that at the last hearing, I presented a comment letter which is dated here, that suggested that the stormwater system, the gallery, subterranean gallery infiltration system, based upon a hand switch model that I ran, would show some breakout at the bottom of the retaining wall, and also shows some mounding in the wetland. I'll also recall, ask you to recall that the consultant on behalf of the applicant from Oak Consulting, Paul, I don't remember his last name, also presented a groundwater mounting analysis that also showed breakout at the bottom of the retaining wall, somewhat less than the one I did. The three of us met, Paul, Sean and I, for a discussion of this, and talked about this situation, and, but that, but does, but according to what Liz just said, you do have other experts, including the applicant's engineer, who has testified that there may be some, according to that letter, some breakout at the base of the wall, so that, I think, is an issue that still deserves some additional attention. At the meeting with Paul and Sean, they showed me a cross-section and asked me if I could comment about potential basement flooding on the neighbors, and I told them that I have not seen that cross-section before, I'm not sure whether it's been submitted to the board or not, but they asked me if I had an opinion about flooding of the neighbors' properties, and I told them I had not done any analysis of that at that point, but that I would look at. So I have done some of that, and I have created this cross-section, which is in draft form, this is a copy of the plan submitted by the applicant, and I'll just draw your attention to this dashed blue line that runs from upper left to lower right, so this is running through the, the southerly part of the wetland, going across to 138 Highland Street. I was also provided elevations by Bard, our client, that shows the elevation of the foundation and their measured depth to the basement floor. For the, for the record, I will say I did not do these by measurements, so I'm relying on Bard's measurements, and he's here tonight, so he could speak to that. And what, so what I did do is I took the plan, and I highlighted the topographic contours here, and created this cross-section, which I'm happy to submit in a comment letter, that this simply was done recently as a result of their question to me about whether or not I had an opinion about flooding of neighbors' basements. So this is a cross-section that runs from the level spreader on, on the site. This upper line represents the land contours according to the applicant's plan. This is the location on the right of 138 Highland Street, the basement. This is, this diagram is vertically exaggerated, as are most hydrogeologic cross-sections. And then the water table, I've inferred based upon, and I'll go back to the site plan for a second, there were two test pits just south of the level spreader, so I projected an elevation at this location, because to my knowledge, there is no bridge, there is no test pit at that location. But what my cross-section does indicate, unlike the cross-section that they presented at a different location, is that there is the potential for a hydrologic connection here. The water table underlying the level spreader on the property that runs underneath the wetland, goes to 138, certainly is at the same elevation. The potential during storms for that level spreader to discharge and add groundwater mounding beneath the wetland in that direction exists. I have, I don't believe anybody's done groundwater mounting analyses in this area, I can be wrong, I have not. And then there's also, the, this level spreader is also designed to overflow during the larger 10, 25, and 100 a year, which would then discharge both groundwater infiltration as well as surface infiltration into this area. So the potential does exist. Again, they asked me if I had an opinion on this, so that's why I looked into this. I don't know if anybody's analyzed this yet. I don't think this is something that's going to be evaluated under the stormwater standards as the attorneys are representing to you. I think this is a valid issue that's before you, it's certainly been a significant public question, and based upon, you know, my analysis of this cross-section in this area, it seems as if something that could use some additional attention, if in fact, one wants to resolve this issue about potential basement flooding. I know my clients are very concerned about it. As I've told Sean and Paul, I have not done the analysis, I've only constructed the cross-section. Perhaps they have now done it, I have not seen that. I don't believe it's before the mass DEP as part of their review of the stormwater standards, so if I'm concerned in that question, as well as the breakout, just to go back to that slide, those are still open questions, which I think need to be resolved, and I'll stop there, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the board, from the board of Scott, while we have him? So Scott, you're saying that you would have a recommendation to do initial, a testing in that area to determine if basement flooding of a neighbor would be potential? Then I'll go ask.
Well, my, my understanding is that concern was raised by the butters, excuse me, and my clients. And I also know that question was raised to me by Paul and Sean after meeting had, and I told them at that point I had no opinion, because I had not done any analysis of it. So I've been asked by my clients, I've been asked by Paul and Sean, and I think you've been asked, or the, the concern has been raised by the, by the neighbors, as far as I know, I recall it, probably means, in fact, I think Bard, our client, sent me a copy of the slideshow, which he presented to you. I was not present at that meeting, but my understanding is those concerns were raised, and I don't believe that has been fully evaluated.
Thank you. Sean, any comments, or, I don't know.
Only to the extent that you'd like me to address them.
That's, I mean, we obviously are within a DEP review timeframe, but if you would like dish on that last piece, maybe to comment on, how do we assure the neighbors that their basements aren't going to flood, or 138?
First of all, Paul Avery, just for clarity, never suggested that there was a groundwater breakout at the walls. His, his graphic was just in response to Scott. So just Scott referenced that, Paul suggested that there's a breakout, Paul has not done that. I have been clear on the issue, there will not be breakout at the wetland or the wall, in my opinion. The, the question that Scott's referring to today was, during the course of our meeting, we tried to sort of get down to some basic points of agreement, one being that water cannot go uphill, and we couldn't even get to that point of agreement. Now Scott has a, a graphic that suggests that the water table is flat from this site all the way to Spafford, Spafford Road, which is absolutely not the case. It, there is no way that groundwater impacts at this site can impact property on Spafford Road. It, it, it is impossible. It cannot, water cannot go uphill. This is, the site is lower, 10 to 15 feet lower than those other properties. The water cannot go across the wetland, that's, the water that's infiltrating on this site cannot go across the wetland and across Highland Street. And, and I don't know how to, how else to express that, than it, other than that it can't go uphill. You know, so, you know, we can explore this further, but I, I don't know if it's going to be able to convince anyone.
So I guess I have a question, if, because when you look at the site, obviously, just on a surface level, there are low areas on the site, and then there's low areas on, down by, on Spafford Road. Not saying that the water would go over Highland, but go underneath Highland, is that potential?
Remember, the, the water that you see on the site, i- is the manifestation of groundwater coming down towards the site from Highland. So, so that's where all the groundwater tends towards the surface water path. So the water on, across Spafford and Highland, to the point where it goes to another watershed, all tends to flow downhill towards the wetland, and then downhill towards Canton Street. So, so, you know, that groundwater is moving towards that wetland, not in the opposite direction. So any water from this site moves down gradient, not up gradient.
So, so what, also, just another follow-up question, so the, the residences that are down, you know, 59 Highland, 75 Highland, which really are sort of right in, above the weir, you might say, it, it sort of breaks between Winter Valley, there's, you know, a water source that runs through, behind those homes, those would not be affected, in your opinion?
Absolutely not, because, because where, where are, the groundwater infiltrated on our site, where it ends up, is the wetland on our site. So that's, the water goes into the ground, moves with the groundwater into the wetland, and then with all the rest of the water downstream, including the groundwater that, that, that falls along the stream. So, so if you can envision a, a stream, there's water in the soil on the sides of that stream flowing much slower, right, but it's, it's still flowing in generally the same direction. So in this case, all of our water goes into the ground, and then follows the natural path of the water down towards Pine Tree Brook.
So Sean, may I?
Yes, because
Just a question, so soils are not uniform underneath all of this area, right? So if there's a, a place where the soils are denser, and a place where they're, you know, that, that elevation of dense soil as a, is at a different elevation than less dense soil, couldn't there be different interactions below ground than there is at the surface, in terms of in terms of how the water moves?
Oh, they're fundamentally different. The biggest difference is how slow they move. So I think I mentioned this one. Groundwater at its fastest moves about a foot, a foot a day, whereas surface water moves cubic feet per second. So, you know, the water under the ground moves so slowly, any sort of impacts are so muted by that. So so there are, yes, there are changes in underground soil conditions, but.
So like, for example, that up there where you commented that it's not going to go uphill, but what do we know about what's underneath the surface?
So the the biggest problem with that, the 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 flat blue line, which represents the water table, that's not the way the water table looks in this situation. So as grade climbs, so you see the Highland Street, the gray line, water tends to to mimic the topography. So as the grade rises, the the water table rises. And it makes makes sense, right? Because groundwater goes downhill, just like surface water does. So you'd expect the pattern to flow in that direction. That's why if, in fact, the the 138 Highland Street would have a wet basement, because, you know, that water table is climbing and climbing with the with the topography, and it's going to be higher on their basement than you would think, than that would suggest. But, you know, the water still goes, that groundwater is still moving in a direction towards the the stream and for all intents and purposes downhill.
So given the level of concern, Scott, can you go back to the plan where it shows where the test pits were done?
Yeah, this one here?
Yes. So the test pits that are, I think, the black squares, is that right?
Yeah, these two here, right.
And, I mean, just to ease concerns, would it make sense to do a couple of test pits further to, I guess it would be the east, closer to the property line, and get a sense of whether the where the groundwater surface, yeah, the groundwater is right on that location? I mean, you, I know you have a belief of where it is, but just for.
Yes, so the test pits are for serve a couple of purposes. Number one, and first and foremost, is to determine the soil characteristics below the soil, so that when we are designing infiltration systems, we design them using the right parameters. So we we design them based on the soil conditions that are below them. A secondary consideration is is separation from groundwater. So we determine that to determine compliance with the stormwater standards that says you have to maintain at least two feet of separation for your infiltration systems. And if you have more than four feet, you don't have to do mounting analysis. So I don't think we would get any relevant data from doing more test pits across the wetland, again, because the infiltration, the water infiltrating on our site is between those two streams. There's there's no way water can, groundwater can jump over a stream, right? It's 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 intended place to end up is the stream and then to flow downhill.
So hi, welcome.
Madam Chair, if I may, just a couple of.
Paul Avery.
Oh, yeah, one second, Scott, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We we dug several test pits at various locations on the site. Regardless of topography, we, within six inches, found groundwater consistently estimated seasonal high groundwater, not groundwater, but estimated seasonal high groundwater, was two feet below ground surface. So we've just applied that rule throughout. We dug a test pit in the driveway area of 107 Highland Street, and we found that groundwater was about estimated seasonal high groundwater about two feet below ground surface. So the the concept of digging a test pit there, we already did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And just very briefly, I'm so sorry, very briefly, I just want to clear up one misconception. I think it's great to have this analysis. I mean, it's very, it's illuminating. But I want to correct something that Mr. Horstley said. He said he doesn't think this issue is before DEP. Their own letter says that the groundwater mounting and breakout issues are are a violation, they're not, of stormwater standard number three from the Stormwater Handbook, which will be directly before DEP if they're right. So this, they they say this is a DEP issue. I assure you, DEP will look at this. They look holistically at everything. So this is not an independent issue that will escape review at DEP.
Perfect, that was my question.
And if I could add, sorry, but but the stormwater standards are the same to everybody. So your CONCOM applies the stormwater standards. They've determined that it complies. DEP is going to apply the stormwater standards. They're going to make a determination whether it complies or not. Paul, as the as the engineer responsible for design, has to issue a certification that it complies with the stormwater standards. I, as your reviewer, have reviewed it against the stormwater standards and have deemed that it applies. So it's not, they're not different standards for everybody. They're all reaching the same conclusion regarding the same standards. So, you know, these are what will end up being four very qualified opinions.
Which is great, that we want certainty on this. So, okay, thank you. And Scott, you had one other comment?
Scott, you're muted.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes, Scott.
Okay. I guess I would suggest, given the prior legal discussion about whether or not the planning board has jurisdiction on these issues, which I found interesting and surprising, I would suggest at least this drainage issue is slightly outside the strict review of compliance with the Mass DEP stormwater standards. I'm talking about flooding neighbors' basements relative to some drainage issues. I don't believe, I was involved in writing the stormwater standards, I don't recall we put that in there. So I think this is a drainage issue that's separate from the stormwater standards. And to Jesse's comment, when I said I didn't think they were reviewing this, I was talking about this slide, what we're looking at here, not so much the breakout issue, which I think I agree, they are going to, they should look at the groundwater mounting relative to stormwater standard number three at the retaining wall. But this issue here we're looking at is, I would suggest, outside the stormwater standards and but inside, clearly, within your jurisdiction of reviewing drainage issues as they affect neighbors. I just want to point out a couple of specifics up here relative to Sean's comments. I agree with him that water table often does mimic surface topography, but certainly not always. I can show you many, many cases that that's not true. But the the gradient here in this area is northerly. You can see, I've highlighted the contours provided by the site plan. Here's the 120, here's the 119, here's the 118, the 117, 116, and so forth. The gradient is northerly. That's, that would be the predicted according, and I agree with Sean, that would be the what I would predict, the gradient of the groundwater sloping downward northerly. This cross section is actually running cross gradient to those contours. You can actually see this 120, the orientation of that line is quite similar to the cross section area. So I think that comment about it always tracking drainage issues, sorry, surface topography is not always true. And in fact, this one very well may be. And the last comment, just to clarify, I think you know this, I was not suggesting that water is going up this hill, as I think you correctly pointed out, Madam Chair. I'm not suggesting that the water is going up this hill into the basement. What I am suggesting is the potential exists for groundwater mounting at this area that could be caused by infiltration at the level spreader, or once it overflows in a design storm and then infiltrates, to reach this basement. And it appears to me, based upon the the water levels that have been provided, that that water table looks fairly flat in that area. Again, we don't have the data, so to whoever asked the question about additional additional wells, and I think even I wrote down when Jesse said this analysis would be good, I agree with him. It would be good. And what's missed, one thing that's missing here is an elevation in this area with this level spreader. You'll notice, if you just quickly look at this, the test pit, at this test pit location, the groundwater is at 120, 119.9 to be precise. At this level, it's 119.5. It's sloping down, as we'd expect, as Sean and I, I think both said, attracts the gradient, which is north, sorry, yeah, south to north. But if you would project what the groundwater elevation might be here, if this water table is continued, it might be around 119, 118.5. The bottom of this spreader is 118. So I would suggest that for a couple of reasons, it might be good to have a test pit here to verify that groundwater elevation, because if this water table gradient is consistent, it looks like to me it might be around 119, 118.5, in the area where we're showing a level spreader at 118. And then if you wanted to find out the gradient across here, because I don't know it, maybe Sean does know it, I don't, but the the topography, as I agree with him, suggests that the gradient would be going down that way, and this is cross gradient, some sort of boring over here would help confirm that. And then we could really have the answer to that. So so just to clarify those couple of things, I'm not suggesting water is going uphill. I'm suggesting that we probably need a little more information on groundwater levels if, in fact, we really want to evaluate this this question that's been raised again by both the neighbors and to me, by Sean and Paul. I don't know the answer to it. I don't think they do either. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, this question was, this concern was expressed loud and clear by the Conservation Commission. Was the reason why Sean was hired by the Conservation Commission specifically to answer this question? It's part of the stormwater process. Sean answered it as he's answered it tonight. The Conservation Commission came in here and told you that that was what they had asked for and that they were satisfied with his response. And so they voted to approve the project and issue an order of conditions. That's the end of any discussion about groundwater relative to this project. And you're entitled, we're entitled to have you rely on that determination. And this is all material that can be reviewed on appeal at DEP.
Yep. And well, yes. Thank you very much. I think we're not able to wrap up with our information here. Bard, you, one more comment? Yes, great. And then we'll get, thank you. Yes, welcome again.
Bard, I read, I love Spafford Road, I'll be very quick. Just in response to the last comment that Ned made regarding the Conservation Commission, we had asked for hydrologists to review this, these specific issues. And as Sean pointed out there, the the concern is that that water table is, I'm sorry, Scott, this is Sean, my bad. That water table is very high on all those basements. So, you know, a six inch, one foot rise in that in that water table across the board, and what you don't see on that other side is how high the hill goes, 140, 150 feet, you know? So that that little depression there is wet because water is draining from multiple sides into that spot. And it is relatively flat there, as I showed. But nonetheless, the six month process of the Conservation Commission also included, I think, at least two meetings that were skipped because the applicant had to redesign some things because they couldn't fit a safe driveway, so they had to encroach on the wetlands. So there wasn't really six months that the Conservation Committee spent looking at at groundwater. They spent a couple of meetings for maybe 30 minutes to an hour. We, you know, because they didn't want to hire a hydrologist, you know, and with respect to Sean, not not doubting his credentials or experience or anything, they wanted, they agreed with Ned on the expediency, let's move this forward. We don't want back and forth because, you know, we have this piece of paper that says, you know, we acknowledge, Tetra Tech acknowledges there will be some some impacts. We don't think they're significant, fair enough. But didn't include any analysis. And we asked, can we have an independent review here from a hydrologist who we've paid with our own dime to look at this? Because basement flooding, I mean, this this is where we live. This, these are, if you ever had water in your basement and, you know, some pumps fail, whatever, it's such a helpless feeling. So the idea that there's this risk that that could happen more frequently and that, you know, we could spend another month here, because at the time they withdrew their application, you know, it seemed like, hey, one more meeting, we can have some answers here and we can review this. Conservation Commission said, eh, we we looked at this, we have this piece of paper, you know, we spent a few hours here and there on it, you know, that's good enough. So really, the reality is, you know, what what's being claimed about this rigorous review, it was not done by the Conservation Commission. So that that's kind of what what I'm saying and the and the reason why we're so concerned. And, you know, that, on that slide, you can see 138 Highland and 42 Spafford, there are stones throw away from this wetland, a stone's throw away from where there, two acres of land is about to be made impermeable if they have their way. So we think it it's worth studying this, something that's going to be there for 100 years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's great. All right. Is it water related, you're on the water issue and then, so we can get to the, great.
Gina on 120 Highland Street. I disagree that Scott Horstley was brought in to deal with that water issue that Ned just referenced. Scott was brought in by the Bacardis prior to working for the neighbors on Spafford. And at the time, in my conversations with the Bacardis, we were concerned about the drainage system that's existing now in the property. And the CONCOM, to my knowledge, never tested the drainage system that's there. There's a big manhole behind the house at 111. There's two more down by the barn, and they appear to be functioning properly, but it was never tested. I don't understand as a neighbor as to what's going to happen with those lines. Are they going to stay in existence? Are they to be removed? The CONCOM process, I thought, was very unfair to the neighbors, not because of necessarily CONCOM, but when they had a meeting like this on a given night, there might be 15, 20 different properties. And so they only had so many minutes to discuss each property. Now, the applicants would pretty much dominate that entire meeting. So they might say something, but the neighbors didn't get an opportunity to speak till about three meetings later, when no one even remembered the issue in the first place. So I think the CONCOM study, I think they did their best, but I think they were way overworked. I think they had way too much on their plate. And the the neighbors implore you folks to oversee everything. And I believe the storm drainage definitely falls within your purview, and I thank you for your time.
Do you want to comment on that on that drainage? Was was that part of your evaluation when you were looking at it?
It wasn't, but again, I've I've been reviewing this for quite a while on your behalf.
Yep.
And my review has been exhaustive and.
So we don't know what, how much water is captured in that drain currently?
No, we do, because it's a, there's a, there's a natural drainage course that runs through the site. And and both of those drainage courses are being maintained. So so there's, there's no change to the water that's flowing through the site. In fact, you know, it's actually, there's been improvements at both crossings because, you know, there was, used to be a a smaller pipe, and now there's a a full box culvert that allows, you know, wildlife passage. So, you know, the key, the key thing to understand is that any flow that exists through that site is being maintained through that site. The the things that we're fixing or mitigating are the changes that result from the project. So, you know, the flow through the site is staying exactly the way it is. The culverts have been sized appropriately to making sure that that flow can get through there safely. All of the changes on the site have been mitigated through the stormwater management system that's been designed by the applicant. So there should, there, there won't be any issues relative to water going through the site.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. I think we, it's in the hands of DEP. We'll wait for their evaluation, but in the meantime, move forward with others, unless there was any questions. Oh, sorry.
There's a couple of hands up on the on the Zoom.
Hi, Tim, you unmuted me. It's Nadine Hannah. Is it all right to go forward?
Go forward.
Yep. Thank you, 11 Spafford Road, Nadine Hannah. Thank you once again for allowing us to speak, all members of the planning board. To, you know, for to misquote Shakespeare, thou doth protest too much. I have such a unique perspective, sitting here and listening in, but also watching this meeting on Zoom. And it 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 baffles me to watch people who are, you know, supposed to be coming in and doing a responsible job here, just take such arms up and 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 request no further investigation or research or anything done that might prohibit them expediting this project. If you're so sure and certain that that this site is appropriate and all right, and you really want to be a good neighbor, why do you need to argue that we shouldn't be allowed to present additional information? Information is acknowledged, their power, they had, they give us the power to help control this environment we're living in. And if we don't do our due diligence here, we can impact people's lives, their livelihoods, their homes, permanently, and not for the better. You know, in respect to the East Milton project, we have a home in East Milton. I see East Milton, even though I don't like change, I respect and understand that's an area meant to be developed in a lot of ways. That's an area that if you develop it, it invites people to want to live there, truly. Developing this site at the top of Highland Ave and Spafford here, that does not encourage people to want to live here. It makes them want to leave. It gives them concern, concern for their physical safety, concern for the well meaning, the well being of their properties. And it's a big issue. So so me, myself, as a resident, just because Ned Corcoran and the North Bridge developers, and now they wanted to bring in a heavy hitter attorney because we did bring it to DEP, but also, you know, they they want to really reinforce this point that it should just be done. Just because they're saying it doesn't mean it's done. The water issue is not closed because the water issue is still an issue. Maggie asked, you know, do we have a right to look into this further? You don't, you have a right, the planning board has a right, you also have responsibility, right? It's it's for. It's, it's for you guys to help put the pressure on to make sure that this has been fully ascertained. And as I stated in the prior meeting, but it, you know, in more concise terms, while I appreciate the due diligence that the civil engineer peer reviewer put in on behalf of the town of Milton, he is not a hydrologist. Ned has been mentioned one, two, three, four, five, at least five times that I can think of. Why don't we hire, we being the town of Milton Planning Board, hire our own hydrologist? And it's been, it's been rebutted every time by people who are not actually on the planning board. You guys don't have to ask their permission. If you want to hire a hydrologist, if you don't want to listen to our hydrologist, our quote unquote hydrologist, who has actually had quite a heavy hand in writing up some of those, those, those things in the D E P law that, that we are now finding that this site does not, is not in agreement with. Get another hydrologist. That's great. Go for it. More research, more knowledge, more information. Make us feel more secure. We're all about it. We clearly are so invested. We put our own dollars in without ever knowing how far it would go, how many more dollars the neighbors are going to look at each other and say, hey, what do you guys think? And we're watching our group dwindle, by the way. Not because people don't believe this is inappropriate, but because there's a limit for every family, right? For how much they're willing to invest in something or how much they're able to invest in something. We're already seeing people face financial hardship by having participated in this process. And we're not seeing anything that's giving us more confidence that this is actually an appropriate development, an appropriately sized site, and hardscape, et cetera. We're not seeing anything that's justifying the deforestation, the, the changing and moving of wetlands and the potential flooding in our neighborhood. And by the way, let's not forget, we're not the only neighborhood. It doesn't just have to travel down Spafford to impact. There are entire communities along Canton and in the neighborhoods below them that will possibly potentially be impacted by this. So once again, thank you. I urge you, I implore you. This is your planning board. You, you are the members who are representing us, who are visiting this town. Please do not let the developer tell you what timeline you're allowed to, to, to use and utilize in this process. We were, we said, we were told it wasn't going to be rushed through. You guys have done a great job for us and we really appreciate it. Don't listen to them. If they're really invested, they can sit tight, they can hang out, they can wait for everyone to get all that information put forward. And they can stop telling us that we're not allowed to do so. Because they're not in charge of this. You are.
Thank you, Nadine.
Thank you.
And was there one other? And then we can move forward. Two more, and then we can move forward.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes. Hi, this is Anthony Noel's 179 Highland Street. I just wanted to bring up a point that was never really addressed and didn't give it deserved attention. The applicant in their site plans asserts that there's an outflow pipe that is coming from either 179 Highland Street, which is my property, or the 137 Bacardi property, property. And in April of 2023, I had a G P R scan company come out to scan my backyard to see what is underground, whether there is a pipe there, whether there is a pipe there, what is going on there. And he scanned my whole property and he lined it up where the outflow pipe is, he scanned. And there in fact is a pipe running through my property and the Bacardi property. And then we also went to 11 Highland Street, which is the street perpendicular mine. And they, he also scanned their backyard and that pipe is also running through that backyard. So the pipe, we don't know where this pipe is coming from. And if we don't know where the water is coming from, and, and don't want to be explored where that water is coming from, I'm curious whether there's an accurate analysis and of what water, where the water is coming from and how much water is flowing there. I know I'll be exploring the origins of this pipe because it's probably a hundred year old clay pipe that's down there. And probably at any sort of important, any, any point in time, it can break because it's old and it's clay. And with any ground movements, which will be on the site with development, there'll be a lot of ground movements. And it's most likely to crack or something will happen with it. So there are no easements on the pipe in my backyard either. So that's, that's not, there's no easements on that. And the, potentially in the future, if any other properties, which we don't know where this pipe is coming from, so we don't know how many properties it does run through. But if there's in the future, people add water, groundwater, move things around, whatever is happening, it could alter the flow rate potentially. And with a new development at Winter Valley, I'm sure that will have some impact on what is happening there as well. And just wanted to say that I agree with the applicant's opinion that boards are meant to rely on each other and respect each other's opinions. But also in our democratic society, I think we all know that there should be some checks and balances of what goes on and that all boards should do their own reveal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One last comment and then we'll move forward.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this, good evening. My name is Doug Henry and I represent Karen Bacardi at 137 Highland Street. And I just want to make two quick points. One is, while, while the planning board is entitled to give deference to the Conservation Commission, you don't have to. I mean, they have their jurisdiction, you have yours. Your zoning bylaw gives you the right to look at groundwater and also gives you the right in this specific section to impose such other terms and conditions the planning board may consider reasonable and appropriate to make a showing that this development is without significant unmitigated detrimental impacts to the neighborhood. So you can look at this issue including the issue that Scott raised. It's clear within your jurisdiction, you don't have to. I mean, the Conservation Commission made a decision. You can look at that and rely on it, or you can make your own independent decision. There's nothing in Massachusetts that says that you have to just stop your investigation because the Conservation Commission has made a decision. The Conservation Commission, you can give deference to them and they, they're a very hardworking body, you can do that. But you are not required to just stop your inquiry because the Conservation Commission has made a decision. And while the wetlands issues and the, some of the stormwater is being appealed by the Stafford Road neighbors, the issue that Scott Horstley raised about potential basement impacts is something that you can clearly look at because it clearly could pose a detrimental impact to the neighborhood, which is something the planning board has to look at and issuing a special permit for this project. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time and good night.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I think with this, it would be good for, unless anybody, any members of the board have questions at this time, I think we were looking forward to getting a presentation on the sweat path analysis. We can look at that.
If Josh or Tim could call up that portion of the plan.
Ned, is that, are those diagrams in the traffic impact analysis or are they in a different document?
No, they're in the civil plan set.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
They're in the civil plan set.
They're in the civil plan set.
Okay. Yep.
Tim, there's C 202 and C 203.
I would preface while Tim is looking for it, that we actually went through three iterations of a building and site design specifically in response to comments from the fire chief in a meeting in January. And then additional comments and changes following the peer review done by Sean and follow on meetings with the fire chief. We had, we adjusted the building to make changes to the width of the driveway going down to the loading dock at the request of the fire chief in January. Those were part of the original submittals. And then we were requested to further expand the driveway, the circle, and widen the, the driveway down to the loading dock to accommodate fire access. That forced us into the non-disturbance zone. It required us to amend and modify plans that we presented to the Conservation Commission. CONCOM determined that we were adequately mitigating those impacts and approved that portion of the project. The other thing I would say is that Sean's work in that area with the chief cost this project tens of thousands of dollars in, in construction. Cost and impact, the additional impervious surface, the additional. It's appropriate, but it was a significant, it will cause a significant increase in the cost of the project. And obviously, we have to eat that. So.
The cost of the project usually, that doesn't, the board doesn't really care about that, in my experience.
Understood. I've heard perceptions that Sean's a friend of the, of the project.
Yeah.
Sean's a friend of his own opinion.
Agreed.
In this case, his opinion was no friend of the project.
So let's walk through this. Yeah.
Sure. So what, this is the sweat path diagram here. The red rectangular blocks are ladder trucks. This was prepared using Auto Turn software, which is the standard tool in the industry for doing these types of analyses. You'll see lots of multi-colored lines on there. The darker red one is the center line of the vehicle, the axles. And then there are two red lines moving out from there that represent the tires. And then the green lines are the bumper overhangs. So what we did is, in this diagram dynamically, you model it through and it takes the mechanics of a ladder truck in this case, for this one, the next slide, is the food delivery truck. And it, it simulates the, the movements through a sweat path of what it would take to come through. I think the top half of that, Tim, is probably more interesting. Yeah, that's the wrong, that's the box truck. Do you want me to stay on the fire truck? Yeah, stay in the fire truck, please. Okay. And so this, there were some accommodations made here. We ended up, as Ned pointed out, the traffic circle, the little roundabout thing you see here was smaller than that originally. And we got feedback on it requesting that it be expanded so that the ladder trucks could come in here and make a complete turn without the need to stop and do a three-point turn or any backing or anything like that. There was also a request that the bumper overhang not hit any obstructions, which in this case would be car bumpers or bollards that will be placed in front of the front entrance. And so those green lines represent that. In the process of doing this, we had to give up a couple of parking spaces. So in addition, in addition to just, you know, making this slightly bigger to make it all work, we did that. The bottom half of this diagram shows how the fire trucks can get down to the service area. And that, we originally had that at 18 feet wide originally, an initial review with the fire chief. He requested we, that we expand it to 20 feet. We did that. Tetra Tech then got involved in the project and looked at the thing and raised further concerns. And there was a lengthy meeting that we had with Tetra Tech and the fire chief, at which point they requested that we widen that to 20 feet, which is what we did. And so this diagram, is it 24? The dimensions are actually called out in the drawing before this, but we widened it up. Yes, it was, went making 24, you're correct. And yeah, this is the result. So this was developed in coordination with the fire chief with considerable input from Tetra Tech as well. The next slide gets into the food delivery. If we want to stop and talk about the fire access, we can.
Yeah, let's see. Are there questions in the fire?
Can you describe, it looks like when the, there's some crossing of the center line of the road for trucks coming and going. Can you just explain that aspect of it, please? When I say the road, I mean Highland Street.
There, there isn't actually. So what you're seeing, the upper right coast, that's a fire truck approaching the site.
Entering.
Oh, that's leaving. Okay. Well, that's the way, that's the way they drew it. They wouldn't, they wouldn't, yeah. Go back up to the one before.
Tim, there's another, there you go.
Okay. So that, that's, that's the way it was drawn that way, but they're just, they can, they can be made. I mean, you have to cross the center line to make a left turn. But otherwise, the curb radii here are large enough so that they can make the turns in and out of the site without having to cross. You don't have to set up for it and go on to the opposing side.
So there's, I'm trying to understand, there's green and there's red and there's orange perhaps? And is there a crossing then of a center line of the access drive?
Of the access drive.
So once, when the vehicle's making a turn.
Briefly.
Excuse me, maybe we can get that blown up so we can actually see.
Can you zoom in on that, Tim, on that intersection of the drive and Highland?
Yeah. On the bridge, sort of.
On the bridge.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in the, in this particular, in this particular model run, it does briefly cross the center line on the driveway by a few feet.
So what happens if there's vehicles there, they just have to move over like they do on a roadway when a fire truck comes by?
Yep.
Okay.
But they don't do it on Highland. It's all within the driveway.
Okay. Can, so can we just run through that, Tim, on each one, just to confirm visually so people can see that? I think this was a concern that was raised before.
So just scroll down to the intersection of each one?
Yeah, stop on each one, just so we can look at each one. So this is a vehicle coming out of the facility, making a left. And then is, why is it show the two? Do they?
It's just in different stages in the.
Excuse me, I have a system coming up right now. On this exit right here.
No, no, not acceptable.
Wait, 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 wait. There'll be a question.
This is the fire engine crashing into the telephone pole in front of my house.
You know, I, I will absolutely give you time to speak, but let's just finish with the, because I welcome you to speak. But we'll finish with the presentation and, yeah.
So can you just explain, as you were starting to, that it's showing at two points, but the vehicle actually has to make the turn to get to the second point. So I, I don't see how it becomes the second, the, the top vehicle. Am I understanding it incorrectly, Sean? Can you explain it maybe?
It, it, it's just sort of a stop motion representation to, just to show you for reference, the size of the vehicle in relationship to the turn. The key thing is, Paul mentioned, are the green and red lines, the red lines being the wheels and the, the green lines being the bumper. And, and this is, as Paul mentioned, this is the actual largest vehicle that Milton has. So this is really, really robust software with, with the clear intention of, of making sure that you can come and go safely.
But isn't it only 40 feet?
It, it is, but it's, but it's, it's, 40 feet's a, a big fire truck.
Yeah, well, I understand. So I know fire trucks, I think the average length can go up to 63 feet. And tractor trailers for deliveries can go up to 73 feet?
Sure. But, but it's the geometry of the, so, so the, the really big fire trucks have the, the back wheels that turn. So, so they're actually more nimble than the smaller fire trucks. The, the, the fire trucks are the most demanding, although usually the pumper trucks with the, the big bumper overhangs and the, in the set wheels. So that, they're, they're the most limiting because they're the hardest to maneuver. So those are the ones that we use for design.
I've asked to make sure that tractor trailer trucks, because we've talked about this before, that the, there'll be an increase in deliveries from tractor trailer trucks. So 40 feet is not a good.
Do, do we want it, we can go on to the, we've got this, yeah, we can go on, if you want to go on to the delivery trucks.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So I just, I do just want to, so the road is narrow with this very small grass and then the sidewalk and the stone wall. And the green line seems to show it very close to the, the electric poles, which are right on the street too. So do you feel, Sean, confident that that every driver who is leaving here is going to be able to safely do that without going across the sidewalk or hitting a pole?
Well, remember, this isn't every driver. This is just, this is just the, the, the emergency vehicle, the fire truck.
Well, I meant every, you know.
Every fire truck tire. Yeah, I'm pretty confident. I mean, the, the Highland Street is pretty narrow, so it is a constricting condition.
Yeah.
This is, this is a, a very, very robust service for, for fire access. I mean, it could always be bigger certainly, but then you start running into the situation of, well, then your intersection, your, your radii start getting really big, your driveway opening gets really big. It looks, it just looks unwieldy and too big for the, for the, for what you get in return. It looks, it just looks unwieldy and too big for the, for the, for what you get in return. So it is a, it is a sort of a, a balancing of what the fire chief feels he needs. And admittedly, the Chief Madden has other things to do. So when I review things, I usually look at it every, everything over again. And then I brief him on what my thoughts are. And then if he shares those concerns, we have conversation with the applicant. And that's what yielded the changes that came around in the, the second iteration.
Do you look at the fire, or does he look at the fire access differently? If it's a fully sprinkled building like this would be with full fire suppression system?
I'm sure he looks at it with less, less immediacy, but, but you still have to get the vehicle in and out under all circumstances. So, so access is always our principal concern because, you know, the, the main reason why we had the, the, the traffic circle turnaround is the original design had, you know, any vehicle, any, any fire truck coming into the site would have had to do a three-point turn to get out. So, so even a, even a, just a normal visit or just a routine alarm check or something like that where they took the truck. And to me, that was sort of, you know, the, the fire chief hadn't noticed in the beginning, but I brought it to his attention. He says, yeah, that's, that's not so great. We should probably fix that. And, you know, to the applicant's credit, they fixed that. So.
And then would there be any concerns, like, there's not much space here for, or when there's snow on the road, where the snow goes? If there's any constriction in the road due to snow plowing, do you have any concerns about how the vehicle could get in and out?
Well, I mean, the, the good thing here is that they have one way in and one way out for, for their, for their own facility. So they're going to necessarily have to keep that clean. They do have a, a large area out back where they can store snow. So unlike most dense projects, usually you don't have a robust area where you can store snow. So they do have plenty of space to store it on the back of the site.
But what about Highland if the town doesn't get that fully cleared? Because they've run out of room with these walls.
Typically, the, the public way is the public way. I usually intentionally don't comment on that because I don't want to obligate the town to have to do anything. Really, we focus on, you know, what is, what does the site have within its control?
Okay, so what it looks like then is that they need the full, the, the vehicle needs the full width of this roadway. And if there was a vehicle on one lane coming in or out, it, it would impede the movement of that vehicle, right? That's why, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
What would, what we would expect to happen is if a fire truck had to respond, they'd come to the site, they'd have their, their lights on and their, their alarms on. And that, that, under state law, that requires everybody to stop.
Right, okay.
So that tends to ameliorate our concerns at, at these kind of intersections. If someone was leaving the site and was stopped preventing the truck to come in, they'd be able to use that stop condition to exit and then the truck would be able to come in.
Okay, well, so that, that is actually my concern because, because of the narrow, and it's really almost more of the issue of Highland Street being so narrow to come in. And that is fairly, it's sort of a blind spot when you come out on a lot of areas. And I know there'll be some clearing, we obviously want some landscaping and buffering. But my concern is because there will be frequent calls, as there are at, you know, hospitals, various, at a care center like this, that there will be frequent emergency calls. And there will also be a lot of elderly visitors, you know, folks visiting maybe their, their spouse. What I, what I'm concerned about is that if there is somebody who's leaving the site and the fire truck is coming in, are you going to be, is, will it be, if you're, you know, say where that fire truck is right now, if that's a vehicle and there's, the fire truck has already made that turn in and an elderly with, you know, maybe poor visibility conditions as well, if, that they are forced to back up on, on the bridge to try to get the fire truck. I know, I would probably do that because I couldn't get out of the way. So my inclination would be to back up and let the fire truck finish its turn and come around.
Yeah, the, the driveway, I think, is actually wider than Highland Street. So, so it's, the driveway is pretty robust. So there's, there's room, plenty of room for, for a person on one lane, for the fire truck to get past it. The only place where there could be a potential conflict is if someone was stopped at the very end of the driveway when the fire truck wants to come in. Under that situation, you, I would expect the fire truck just to wait a second and let that person leave because everybody else would be stopped at that intersection. So there would be nothing precluding that driver from just exiting the driveway when the fire truck was coming. Anybody coming down the road as the fire truck was pulling, they should be pulling over. But if they don't, there's still room for the fire truck and the car going in the opposite direction to travel safely on that.
It just seems like a vehicle of that length, it's going to take a little bit of time to make the curve and then assume back on your, on the right lane.
It, it does, but that usually happens within one car length of the intersection. So, so, so that, that turn move, it's, it's, it might take some time, but it's, it's all happening at one location. It doesn't continue down, like they don't sort of crab down the roadway. It's just one turn in, there's a, there's a little bit of conflict potential at that, at the very beginning of that, that turn. But once they get into the site, then it's their back in their regular travel lane.
So Paul, are all the driveways 24 or just?
No, just the section that runs down to the service area.
So what is the causeway?
20.
20 from the sidewalk curbs?
Curve to curve.
Curve to curve.
So it includes the sidewalk?
No.
No.
Face to curve, face to curve, travel way.
Great.
So asphalt basically, right?
Yeah. Asphalt is 24. It's drawing C 201 as all the dimensions.
So the thinking was 24 at the delivery area?
The reason there was, in Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, was that was so that in the event that there was multiple emergency vehicles staged down there, that they would be able to easily get in and get out.
Well, and it was the, it was the proximity of that exterior wall.
Yeah.
So, so, so if you're fighting a fire and you have to do something along that wall, in, in our opinion, there just wasn't enough safe room between the building and the space outside of it. So we wanted to have.
For men to move around the truck.
Yeah, and we wanted to have some offset from the building to, to where the truck was limited to, to staging. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a dead end, so it's, it's the longest it can be. It's 150 feet long without a turnaround, so it's, it, it meets the standard, but it's, it's on the longer side. There's a lot of stuff going on down in that end, which the, with the, with the deliveries and the dumpster and things like that. So just in terms of just being, to make sure we had enough space to operate and to get people past each other if we needed to.
Got you.
And Paul, it's, it's 22 feet, the driveway.
Okay.
To 11 foot leads.
So asphalt to asphalt is 22?
Yeah, curve to curve, yes.
22.
Yeah, so if you go back one drawing, they're all called out there. See 201.
And for reference, a, a, a standard roadway is, like a subdivision roadway is 24 feet.
Do we want to talk about the?
Sure.
Sure, so if, go ahead to, what, 203, the delivery access plan? There you go. Okay, so up in the upper left there, there's a graphic of the, the, the delivery truck. This delivery truck is, and there was an earlier submission of plans that actually had a photograph of it, the one that is used in Newburyport. It's what's called a WB40, which is a 40-foot wheelbase vehicle. That is what this has been designed to accommodate. And that is what AVITA will be contractually requiring from the food service provider that this delivery trucks will be limited, which they have, it's, they're one of their standard fleet vehicles. So again, the way this works, it's the same concept with the, there is a, I mean, just very quickly, probably just to look at it so that everyone understands, if we slide the drawing down so we can see up in the top corner, what this vehicle, what a WB40 looks like, there's a graphic representation of it. So it is technically a tractor trailer, but it, it's not the ones you see on the highway with the big 53 foot. Those are like WB65s, okay? So this is, is technically a tractor trailer configuration, but it's not the massive ones you see on the highway typically. Anyway, the way this works is it's the same access, we've got the same lines. The, the access will be that the truck comes in, it goes around the, the traffic roundabout here at the top. They need to do that anyway because the delivery drivers will need to check in at the front desk. So whether they needed to to get down there or not, they'd still need to go pull up at the, at the front entrance, go in, say hi, we're here for the delivery, check in, at which point they will back down into the service area, do the delivery and then drive back out. And the turning movements here are similar to the ladder truck.
One thing I'll just point out that I think that the neighbors in a presentation several weeks ago showed larger trucks at a couple of other facilities. Those trucks are not prohibited to, to operate at those facilities. They would certainly be subject to a restriction here to a truck that's no larger than what we've presented.
Can those, this size truck make the intersection at Canton Ave and Highland? The radius is, is narrower, I believe, or smaller than this radius, I believe, on this roadway?
I have, we haven't looked, I would think they would be able to. Sean, do you have an opinion on that?
Again, it would be something that we, we generally wouldn't look at again because it, it's, it's a, it's a public road with no limitations for truck access. So the presumption is this is, this is on the smaller, this is probably the smallest tractor trailer. And to your point, Maggie, there was a certain intent to not make it too robust of an access on the expectation that if it was, if it was easy to access the site for a tractor trailer, then it might be easier for them to bring in bigger tractor trailers, which I'd prefer them stay with the smaller delivery trucks. So just given the size of Highland Street and the size of the intersection, there was sort of a, a little interplay there where, you know, not having such robust access for tractor trailers means that they're limited to what they can bring them.
Which I do understand that, however, in reality, which we've talked about before, and, you know, I get tractor trailer deliveries all the time, even if they're just delivering one pallet of grassy. So just in the, this time, you know, my husband worked for a trucking company and they're getting away from smaller vehicles because there are less truck drivers. The average age of a truck driver is like 55. So there isn't people, there aren't drivers going into it. So the trucks are getting bigger and they have to make more stops. So I understand your logic, but it's not reality.
You're saying you contract with.
Yeah, it's not, this isn't done by a trucking company. The, the, it's delivered by a food service provider. So they have their fleet, their drivers, it says Gordon's right on the side of the truck, so. They didn't recognize them.
It'd be interesting to see how they would route it because like this morning, when I was coming down Canton Ave from, let's say, Blue Hills Parkway this way, there was a semi at Wendell Park that was trying to back up into Canton Ave. It was sort of in a, kind of a jackknife position. It was having a difficult time with the length of the vehicle and the size of the roads.
The logical route is, is coming up Randolph Avenue, what, 28? It's actually faster to get to the intersection of Canton and, and Highland, excuse me, Canton and Reed's Dale by coming up 28 as opposed to working your way through Canton Avenue 138. So it would come in.
Still has to make the, the turn at Canton Ave and Highland, right?
Right, that would be a left and onto, into Highland, which is a pretty wide intersection. That side of the intersection is wide, it's very narrow, obviously across the street at Thatcher. And then it's a fairly wide right, back out onto Canton Avenue and back to Reed's Dale Road.
Because it's showing here that that's, it's crossing over a center line too, right? To, to make it, if I'm understanding that correctly. It's got, it's got a loop here at MA?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's, unlike NFPA regulations and, there, there's no regulations for acquiring kind of how, how you access for fire truck. I mean, how you access for deliveries. So NFPA has requirements for not, not be, not having to travel in the travel lane of the opposing traffic, whereas there's no such thing for, for delivery vehicles.
Yes, we hear frequently in East Milton Square how delivery vehicles cause a lot of traffic, problems blocking traffic. So we'd not, like not to have it elsewhere too, but, all right.
How many deliveries like this do you anticipate a week? You guys ever run that?
It's fewer than five, it's fewer than five a week. It's three to, it's three to four.
And then the linens are, like, linens done on site, so would you have, that's another truck? You've got food service, linens, trash.
Yeah, trash would be typical trash haulers. Occasional, well, and then be occasional other service deliveries, but that's your main, those are your main deliveries.
The food once a day, linens?
Food probably once every second day, at least come in every couple of days. Linens once a week, maybe twice a week. Other, other smaller delivery trucks making deliveries periodically. And we, we can agree to a restriction on time of deliveries. So between 10 and 2 during off peak, so that those deliveries aren't conflicting with the, with the on-peak traffic.
Okay.
10 and 2 would be outside school too, right? While, while school is session. It's while school is session, before the afternoon school peak, which is usually between 2:30 and 3:30.
Were there any other slides or is that, those are the, that's it on those? Okay, great. And for people who want to find this online, Tim, I don't know if there's a easy way to, like, maybe have this under a separate label, a separate name, if, if anyone wants to, you know, the public wants to be able to go on and look at this.
When, when we submitted, I think I submitted these sheets in a separate exhibit dealing with fire and truck access.
That would be good, maybe labeled as a separate.
But I think they were labeled separately. I'm not sure how Tim loaded it up.
Okay.
But that's the way I, I delivered.
Right, okay. Any other questions for members and then we can let the members from the public speak? Or ask questions? All right, thank you. We'll ask questions and. If you can be available to answer anything, yeah. Okay. Gene, do you want to come start?
Hi, I'm Gene Irwin, 120 Highland Street, live right across the street from this fiasco. Apparently, if you're the applicant and you want to do a memory clinic.
Excuse me, Gene, can you pick up a microphone while you're speaking?
Apparently, if you're the applicant, the memory clinic, you don't need to follow any rules. So right here, I'll pass it, I'll check it, more of them. But under the fire code 18 dot 2 dot 3 dot 4 dot 8, I've brought this up before, a year ago, the use of the opposite lane is prohibited in the design of all new fire apparatus codes. So is it permitted or isn't it? This says it's prohibited, but yet we got this. And this thing is all over the road. And, you know, to Maggie's point, these trucks are fire, the fire engine we have is 48 feet long. I'm going to assume, how long is this truck here?
That's a 40.
40, okay. So the 48 foot, and I have the charts and the whole bit for you folks. But can we go to the fire access, please? Okay, keep, keep going, please. So again, this is only a 40-foot truck. This right here is only a 40-foot truck. A 48 is going to swing even wider. And I have it right here, the inside wheels on the fire engine, the code requires 25 feet to make that right here and turn. Our road is how many feet wide? 22? So even the first two wheels are going to be up on the sidewalk. The second two wheels are going to be over here, the outside wheels are going to be in the swamp. It takes a 48-foot truck to make the loop, counting the area under the bumper. It takes 40 feet. So if you're at the corner here and you're trying to turn in here, you need a 40-foot opening. They can't do it. This is, this plan here may have been done using that auto turn simulated software. But what we should have here instead is the actual, it's like a cartoon. They show the vehicle driving down, coming in, turning, going around, going through, and the vehicle's actually moving. And you're going to find that the operator of this auto turn, whoever they hire. that the operator of this auto-turn, whoever they hire, is probably gonna have to make about a 700-point turn right here, trying to get in. The other thing our fire code says, and I'll read it off to you. Multiple access roads. More than one fire department access road shall be provided when it is determined by the authority having jurisdiction, I think you folks have jurisdiction, that access by a single road could be impaired by vehicle congestion, condition, or terrain, climate conditions, or other factors that could limit access. So to me, on a day almost like today when the roads are slippery and this truck's coming down here, he's in a hurry, there's an emergency, and he slips over here and he gets stuck and he can't make the turn, it's gonna take him 100 turns if he can ever do it, without backing over my wall and the whole shoot match. This, you block off this, everyone in here is in peril. They need another fire access road. They should have had one coming through where the barn is on a diagonal at minimum. They should have come through Winter Valley in the back. But again, I have it right there, a fire access lane, just one lane, is supposed to be 20 feet wide. So when they approach, there's only two feet left for the rest of the world. And let's say when this ladder truck extends its legs, if you ever need to use the ladder to tilt the ladder out, that's 26 feet. You're gonna be putting them in muck on either side of the curb. I say, this whole thing is a joke. When they get down here, again, at the end of the parking lot, they need a 40-foot swing. What's the distance between these parking spaces and these parking spaces? Can someone tell me? Because this is an awful graph, there's no measurements. What's the distance of the center line here between the parking spaces? Anyone know? I thought I heard 20 feet. Is that correct? Well, in any of that. Let's say it's 20 feet. For the fire engine here, a 48-foot truck, he needs 40 feet to make the turn. So he's gonna just model all these cars going down the line with his front bumper. The bumper overhangs the front axle by just about eight feet. The distance between the back axle has two axles. The distance between the rear two axles and the front bumper is 31 feet. So again, when the fire engine is leaving here, when his rear axle gets up to about here and he wants to make the turn, he's got 31 feet out in the street. The street is 21 feet wide. The sidewalk's four and a half feet wide, so maybe 25. The lighting wall's two feet wide. For him to make the turn, he's three feet over my wall. Forget the other light. He's over the sidewalk and he's stuck on my wall. And somehow, for public safety, to me, it's a trunk, everything. Forget, you know, aesthetics and you know, all that sort of nonsense. Let's say, when I see a fellow here, I have a picture right here on my phone, I'd get it and show you, a fire engine leader in the hospital. An ambulance, so why would my dog? And sure enough, a Randolph ambulance pulls out and he can't stay in his lane. He's entirely in the other lane with traffic coming uphill. I say, this here, I don't think we have to have any architectural hearings, nothing. This destroys their whole argument. There's no second egress. The whole world can see that this here is just rot for disaster. And they need a second access road at minimum. Going up further here, this turnaround, they say the center lane is not supposed to be a jog less than 150 feet. Well, if these two are 40 feet, the jogs only put 80, 90 feet. This whole interchange right here is no good. It's too small, it's too sharp a turn. So I say they can't turn around here now. The delivery trucks, you know, you get that 70-foot delivery truck. Anyone ever listen to a delivery truck backup? They, the noise they put out is 97 decibels. The loudest noise in the world is 194. That's exactly half as loud as noise in the world. Now, a fire engine, a fire engine, forget the fire engine, a delivery truck, he comes around a circle and he goes up here. Now this poor outside of that, he's gotta back up around a corner with a 70-foot truck. How many feet? 200 feet. And we have to listen, now 97 decibels is louder than a motorcycle. The average motorcycle is only 95 decibels. So every single time they get a delivery, and the noise is so bad that the OSHA says, if you can't see up the back, you have to have the alarms at 97 decibels or you have to have a guy waving you in, a scope. And he needs earmuffs. Because he's only allowed 95, excuse me, 85 decibels. They say just listening to 97 decibels a half hour a day is gonna destroy your hearing. So I say, to me, this whole thing is just a terrible plan. I don't see why, you know, we should waste any more time on it. If they want to have, talk more architectural, the whole bit, come back after they straighten this out. But they've wasted three and a half years, this should have done, done day one, not three and a half years out. And I say, they're just taking every rule, regulation, fire department, and who's at peril? The public, public safety, all to make a buck. They can go anywhere else in town with their money. They can go to Fompont Academy, they can go to Pepsi-Cola, they can go to the American Legion Post, they can go up to Eagan, they got enough money to buy anything in this town they want. They could buy Cunningham Park for that matter. So to try to jam this dangerous proposal in this wetland, I already had a woman come from Milton Hospital, cross, I was mowing my lawn, next thing I turn around, she's in my driveway. Can I help you? Yeah, I'm looking for the bus stop, she was confused. Make a long story short, I drove her home to Randolph. Two weeks later, I find the poor woman's dead. What happened? She wandered off into a swamp. So now we're bringing the swamp to the people who don't really have good mental capacities. We're bringing the swamp to them. This shouldn't be called a Vita, this should be called Alcatraz. It's a giant prison in a giant puddle of water. Thank you very much. Oh, and by the way, I have copies of those codes if you want to see them. I have the dimensions of the ladder trucks, the turn radiuses and all that. And I'll try to give you all a copy. I'll give you time.
Do you have a question? Yeah, Sean.
Sean, do you know what the slope is for that access down to the loading dock? The roadway slope?
I don't. I can check though.
This is Paul, Paul Lee.
I think it's, I think it was designed to be 10% to meet
fire access. It's right in that general neighborhood, so it's eight to 10. I have to look at it. I mean, I usually avoid not going any steeper than that, just as so, you know, without checking again.
And where's the dock on that plan? The loading, I mean.
There is, there is a dock.
So there's a little, like, you see, there's like.
Receiving, just the receiving area?
Yeah.
So there's no, there's no like dock per se, it's all a gray.
And the trash dumpsters, that the trash pickup, that would be still located? In that front? So the trash will also come? And then the trash backup as well? Do you know, that was actually a good question. Between where that turn radius is, sort of where the T and the two parking areas? What, do you know the difference, the distance?
Yeah, the rear parking lot is made, laid out is a 60-foot bay, okay? So it's 18-foot parking stalls, 24-foot drive aisle, 18-foot parking stalls. That's what you see in typical commercial shopping centers and that type of thing. It's a standard parking lot layout. It's not skinny.
24, alright, thank you.
Yep.
That was, just to clarify.
You both are familiar with NFPA? I think that was, may have been referenced. Do you want to comment on what's your understanding of the requirements in NFPA?
So NFPA refers to certain requirements that are subject to the AHJ, the Authority Having Jurisdiction. In the case of the Fire Department, the Authority Having Jurisdiction unfortunately is not you guys, it's the Fire Chief. So he's kind of the arbiter when it comes to that. Massachusetts has its own regulations that sort of elevate some of the access requirements. But the Massachusetts regulations have an allowance in their first paragraph of those regulations that that says they don't, if it's a town, I think that is subject to the subdivision control law. It's the Fire Chief that takes precedence and not those particular access guidelines. So NFPA is what we follow because those are, that's explicit and there's no relief for that.
Our understanding is well, the Authority Having Jurisdiction is a defined term. And that is the person designated within the Fire Department. And in this case, it's the chief. You know, obviously, we're complying with the chief's requirements.
And does the chief have a CDL license?
Does he have a what?
A CDL license.
Commercial driver's license?
Yeah.
No idea. So do they, I'm sure they're all licensed to drive the apparatus.
Do you know if he, when you went and spoke to him, did he have a book of regulations? Or did he just look at it and say, yeah, I think we can do this turn? Like, is this fixed for every curb cut?
Every curb cut in Milton? It's fixed for the, it's fixed for new development.
Regulations like the building code, but it's for roads?
Yeah, he doesn't need a book. He has, he has a code specialist, so.
Okay, so he gives this to somebody?
Yes, yes, yeah. But there's also, there's subtle things that are hard to pick out in a plan that typically when I look at it, I look at it with a little bit more sort of harder pen. So that's why usually I brief him on things that I see. But again, defer to him in every case because it's his men that have to, or women that have to get out there and he has to respond. So it's always, always gonna be up to the Fire Chief's decision as to whether or not it's adequate enough.
So when, when he looked at the circle, he said it was fine, he said it's too small, and then he said, oh yeah, it is too small, let's make it bigger.
Right, because at the time, they showed, they showed a three-point turn. And so your Fire Chiefs usually, they're proud people. They're there to fight fires. And their response is, we'll get there, we'll do what we have to do to get there. So I take it upon myself to make sure that it's not any harder than it needs to be for them to do their job. In that case, I was a perfect example. He says, yeah, we can live with that. But I said, but wouldn't it be better if? And then the chief agreed and that's, we ended with a bigger traffic circle and the ability to drive in and turn out. Same thing with the 22 feet. It was, wouldn't it be better? Are you at all concerned at how close that driveway is to that wall of the building? He said, yeah, it'd be great to have a little bit more room. I said, well, if we had this much width, we could get one truck past one another. So if you had, if you had your vehicle on one side and there was a pumper truck stage on the other side, you could get by without any problems. And he says, yeah, that would be better. So we ended up at this, based on that conversation.
So Sean, my understanding is, let's say there wasn't a peer review engineer looking at the plans. The Fire Chief has resources at the state level, right? Where they can seek an opinion or advice about an access such as this? Is that right?
I think so, but usually he has a code enforcement officer that he relies on most often.
Because I remember having a conversation, I don't remember if it's the current chief or a prior chief about that. And he had told me that they, they had access to more sort of specialists at the state level.
That's what I had.
Is that her too? I have a recollection as well?
Yeah, there definitely are. And I think there's actually a gentleman that actually tours and sort of gives briefings on
Okay, that makes sense.
Code and interpretations.
He does have Lieutenant Mattaliano is his code enforcement guy. He looks at every one of these plans for the chief.
So he has looked at this also?
We met with both of them.
Not a state guy, two Milton guys?
No, it's a Milton guy. It's, he's a fire lieutenant.
He's the code.
Mattaliano is his name. And he and the chief met together consistently. And they bounced, they bounced things off of each other.
So my question is, wouldn't it be better if the 25-foot non-disturbed wasn't disturbed? And instead of disturbing the 25-foot, why wasn't the building reduced? Why wasn't another alternative discussed as opposed to going into the wetlands?
That was a question for the Conservation Commission. We asked that specifically because if their answer was no, we can't go there, we'd have been forced to redesign the building. But they accepted the mitigation that was proposed and the replication of additional wetland area. And they accepted that and they issued the order of conditions.
And from my perspective, it's another balancing act. And in this case, the Wetlands Protection Act doesn't protect the 25 feet, that's just a local bylaw.
Yeah.
The magic isn't with the 25 feet. It's like, there's not animals that stop at 25 feet or there's not activities that stop. It's having a buffer zone of a certain mass or a certain area around it. So if we can do 23 feet here and then do 27 feet somewhere else, it's fundamentally the same thing. In my opinion, I was like, I would much rather have that two feet for the Fire Department or that four feet, whatever we ended up with, for the Fire Department to do what they do in, rather than have two more additional feet at that one particular location. So it wasn't, it wasn't encroachment all along the whole edge, it was the encroachment in a couple of locations.
Yeah, so I guess my concern is just the Conservation Commission is really strict on this 25-foot for the average resident. So it's just a little bit.
You know, Maggie, I've had some of those cases with the Conservation Commission and they are strict. But the reason why they're strict is there's no place to mitigate. Right? We've got all sorts of area to mitigate. And we mitigated mitigating 4,000 square feet to 900 square feet of impact. The average homeowner doesn't have that opportunity. And the Conservation Commission weighed that very carefully when it was making its decision.
Thank you, alright. Any other, any hands up in the audience? I don't know if, do you see any, anyone else who would like to just?
Nadine with her hand up again.
And there's a couple of people that want to speak.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Jesus O'Brien, 42 Spafford. So my concern with them making the loading dock the driveway larger is that then it's just gonna be two trucks down there all the time versus it's not gonna be just for the fire engines, it's gonna be for the deliveries. And I'm gonna look out the window and just see two trucks all the time. So and the trash down there, like, could that be put in the back parking lot? Like, you just said there's a lot going on down the loading dock. And even in the zoning law, it wasn't called a loading dock, it was called a driveway. So I never even picked up that that was the loading dock. And I'm looking out my bedroom window at that loading dock. And I understand they're making it bigger for the fire engines, but what's gonna happen, it's just gonna be delivery trucks. I do, I do property management, commercial property management. Loading docks are not the prettiest part of the building. Like, we should be looking at a pretty entrance. The closest thing to the street is the loading dock. So please consider that. Please, please, please. Give us a pretty front door, like reset, like if the building was twisted, we should not be looking at a loading dock. The whole street is gonna pull up to that stop sign. We should be looking at a pretty front entrance because that's what they keep showing in all these pictures. It's a pretty driveway going to their front door. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, Dan O'Neil, Talmud member. 15 Spafford Road. Could we go back to that slide with the fire truck?
Yeah, Josh, can you pull that back up?
Now, we don't see the entire part of this building, we're only seeing about two-thirds of it. So I was wondering if, and I'm not a firefighter, very tough job, if a fire broke out here in the building, how would the fire trucks fight that fire from this location? When there are residents living there? I don't see how you'd be able to get, I know you get hoses there, but that seems like a huge flaw in this design to me as a layman. I don't know if that was ever considered in terms of trying to get, you know, another access point here to potentially save other people's lives. That's what I wanted to point out to the board.
Yeah, that was actually one of the other significant changes that was made during the course of that conversation with the Fire Chief is is prior to this iteration of the design, there was no walkway that extended all the way back to that section of the building that you just referenced. So we asked them to add a pathway to get from where that fire truck is drawn near the parking area up front so they could go along the backside of the building to get back to that back corner. Otherwise, they would have to go down to the bottom where the loading area is and then go around up the hill to get to that same spot. So we added a new pathway at the back of the building in response to that access issue.
And how wide is the pathway?
I think it's five feet, is that right, Paul? Yeah, five feet.
So yeah, so how would you get hoses to that?
So the truck would stop at So, so the, the, the truck would stop at that spot right near the, where the handicap spaces are.
And they would physically?
And they, they physically pull a hose from, from that location all the way to the back of the building. Now, Maggie, the building is sprinkled.
Yeah.
Um, and there are other, other fire suppression systems within the building. Um, it's about 250 feet, so it meets the Massachusetts requirement. And well within the, the federal requirement for sprinkler.
And wasn't there talk of going in through the front door through the building to access certain areas at one time?
I'm sure they're going to do that if they have to do something inside the building, but they're not likely to bring a hose out of the building. And forgive me, I'm, I'm not a firefighter, so this is speculation on my part, just based on what I know from experience.
I thought I saw on the plan some, some of those hose standoff connection things back there, but I could be wrong.
And is, is the 250?
Thank you, Dan.
But, um, is, is that standard for, um, the type of population, an elderly population with medical conditions?
Yeah, there's only, there's only one requirement as it relates to the maximum distance from where a fire truck can, can stage in any exterior portion of the building. On, for a sprinkled building under National Fire Protection Regulations, it's 450 feet. In, in Massachusetts, for communities that aren't, you are, are under the purview of the state, it's 250.
The building code for a use like this is more stringent than for other uses? I, I don't specialize in this kind of project, but I suspect with a project of this size that you're going to have fire rings so it can separate. So the fire, if there's a fire in one section, it closes off the other because you have people who aren't potentially ambulatory. And you've got to be able to stage getting them out. So the codes account for that, but th- this isn't fully, you know, a full set of construction documents at this point, so they wouldn't have that level of detail yet. But I'm, that's my suspicion, is that you're going to see that there's areas of refuge, as it's called. So people are, are brought there to wait to be, um, taken out.
And that's a good point. So, so the access requirements are all one particular part of the code, right? So, so, which just governs fire vehicle access to and from the facility. So all that, there's, there's pages and pages of other requirements. The, the ones we focus on as a site concern are just the access requirements to make sure that they have at least 20 feet wide, to make sure they have the offset distances that they need. To make sure that they have a practical approach for getting trucks in and out. Um, but, but just the, the section that we're referring to is, is just the access portion.
Thank you.
This buil-, the building is being designed with interior stand pipes that are, that can be activated. There are, um, there are separators. They're obviously being, they'll be fully designed to the most modern, uh, fire requirements.
All right, thank you. Um, and questions from, uh, on Zoom? Josh, are you seeing hands still?
Yes, Nadine Hannah and Manette Donovan. Nadine, I think that, give your name and address again.
Hi, thanks so much, Josh. Um, Nadine Hannah, 11 Stafford Road. Um, I wanted to stack this up briefly to the, the question of the types of trucks, um, that most likely, not maybe not, most likely will be, um, servicing this facility. As I mentioned before, I am a retail food sales broker. What that means is I'm, I'm the person who helps food get from a manufacturer to a supermarket. This is something, an industry I've been in my entire life. My family is in this industry. I went on bread delivery rides when I was a kid. Like, this has been I won't say how many years, because I like to think I'm younger than I am, but it's been a lifetime of experience. Um, that being said, I have actually personally worked with Gordon Food Service, GFS, which, um, Mr. Corcoran referenced as being the contracted food service provider for this potential site. Um, a number of years ago, they dropped a large portion of, if not all, of their retail food service, um, to focus on what we just call food service, right? Instead of going to reach into supermarkets, being kind of a middleman buffer for going to supermarkets, they now primarily do food service to facilities, cafeterias, restaurants, et cetera. That means that they put all their eggs in this basket. Um, and it's important for them to maintain all the relationships, no matter how big or how small. And, and you know, we're seeing now that this is a multi, uh, this group who's, you know, petitioning to, to come into Milton has more than one facility. They are going to be a large contract partner. And so that's going to be important to them. And so, uh, on their own website, GFS states, uh, customer is king. They have a war room mentality. They are the largest privately held food service distributor in North America. Uh, you know, with a proud fleet of 2,800, 2,800 tractor trailers. More wheels under that than, than, you know, I can count on, uh, on two hands. Um, and from what I know of my own self in an industry where we're providing food or food service, and specifically with GFS, they will put any truck under any PO, no matter what the contract says. There's always either a loophole or just going to turn a blind eye. So again, let's please not rely on the rhetoric of no big trucks will be allowed in because we're saying we won't let them. That doesn't mean anything. This is the real world. A PO, a purchase order is something that someone wants and something someone else wants to get paid for manufacturing, providing, et cetera. Um, so let's not try to ignore the fact that we will be adding heavy vehicles, commercial vehicles, commercial traffic, heavy duty commercial vehicle traffic to our streets. And that Highland Ave on its own is a very narrow, as stated, more narrow than the already too narrow entrance to the driveway, very narrow street. The straightest, you know, on-ramp now, that's what I'm going to call Stafford Road, the straightest on-ramp onto Highland Ave. The cleanest, smoothest, most direct, without any twists, turns, or, you know, even a deterioration to the road surface is Stafford Road. So there will be big trucks here. There will be bigger trucks than were being promised, and they'll be frequent. Food service, linens, trash, pharmaceutical, medical supplies, office supplies, utility providers, they're going to say one to two. That means probably three to four times per week, depending on which one we're talking about. This is a serious issue. Um, and then also just to go back to the question of, okay, so what do we do if a vehicle is either entering or exiting the, the driveway at the same time as an emergency vehicle, like, like a very large fire truck would need to come in and, and use the same access road? Okay, there's just enough space that that car can pull over. But what if it's one of these large delivery trucks? Because emergencies don't care about, um, you know, docking times. They don't care about appointment times. They don't care about the fact that, uh, you know, well, we need to let this GFS truck clear the area prior to allowing, you know, uh, the emergency vehicle. And that's not, that, that's not how the world works. And we all know that. And also, a last point, um, expanding upon something that Teresa was raising its concern, but from my industry knowledge, if you have two loading docks at a facility, you are expecting not just two deliveries, but three or four at a given time. You're expecting to have a truck at each bay and probably another one waiting on the, in the parking lot somewhere. The, by the way, oversized parking lot, which will provide the ample snow storage opportunity. They don't need that space for cars. They just needed a hardscape to hold the excess of snow. Um, but we will have multiple vehicles at the same time trying to access this facility because the only thing that really can be enforced in this, in Milton, right, would be the limited delivery hours. That's it. There's nothing else. There's, there typically, when it comes to delivering product to a commercial facility, you have noise constraints, which would mean within certain hours that you were not allowed to make the noise of a truck. That inherently states that these trucks make a lot of noise. And you're not allowed to have the traffic, um, of that delivery, which, as I've said, 10 to 2 is the hours that they're looking at. So in that limited window of time, what's that, six hours, four hours? I mean, hold on. You're going to have all the vehicles that are commercial, that are providing a, a distribution service to this building, looking to get in there on those docks at the same time. So even now, let's bring that one step further. The limited receiving hours, which, which are a necessity, are going to be exceptionally busy. They will be exceptionally loud. They will be exceptionally cumbersome on local traffic. They'll be exceptionally disruptive. We are taking a wooded area with wetlands and developing it in a way that is going to entirely disrupt the neighbors, the neighborhood, the landscape, and, and the overall safety of those here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have one more and then.
I don't see any more.
Yeah, we have no more hands raised.
No more hands. The person who dropped off. Okay, great.
Oh, sit down, back up.
Let's back up now. All right, Josh?
Yep, Manette, you can, uh, give your name and address.
Hi, thank you. Um, Manette Donovan, 16 Stafford Road. I'm just to want to follow up on the trucks very briefly. Nadine got to the majority of my points. Uh, once again, this, um, is a demonstration of this site being a square peg in a round hole. It's not appropriate for this site. Highland Street is a very, very narrow scenic road. It's not zoned for a giant facility like that. This for good reason. The hospital works because deliveries can come in from Reed's Dale Road, which is a four-lane road. It's completely inappropriate to bring in the trucks on Highland. I've shown a number of photos already to the planning board showing how narrow that road is. It defies common sense to put this right where kids from our neighborhood walk to school, given the emphasis that this town is placed on wanting safe routes to school. Um, and the response is inadequate. We promise you that we'll only use box trucks. Nadine gave you all of the details on that. I would follow up by saying that we shouldn't, we, we know what the underestimate was for cars and how much more traffic there actually was going to be. So we should really get some detailed numbers now, such as a log from all of the facilities indicating deliveries, um, and sizes of trucks from actual logs, um, so that we can see what, what is to be anticipated. The best indicator of, of what's going to happen is, is what's currently happening. And, and I know, I'm sure it's in good faith saying, uh, we, we're going to have our contractor sign this, but we all know that's not enforceable. What are they going to put a deed restriction? What's going to happen in 10 years, five years? So, and, and we keep hearing about what wonderful neighbors they're going to be. And Teresa, who's right across the street, has asked one thing, the loading dock. And now we're just, instead of making the site smaller, we're making it larger and the loading dock is still right there, um, next to her kitchen window. So, um, I would say, uh, thank you for your careful consideration of this. We appreciate it. That's all.
That's great. Thank you.
There is one more hand.
One more hand? Okay, then. Let the board speak.
Sharon, if you can give your name and address, please.
Hi, Sharon Rich, 43 Stafford Road. Um, thank you, everyone, for your time. I appreciate being able to speak. I, I just want to comment as we're talking about the large vehicles. You know, I know Milton Hospital has requested that their vehicles do not use Stafford Road. Vehicles such as food service and linen deliveries and ambulance, um, to not go down our street. We've complained to them. It happens all the time. Um, I just want to point out that, you know, my ring, um, picks up everything for whatever reason. It picks up every, like, a lot of things on Stafford Road. Most recently, on August 10th, at 12:53, there was a Cisco really large semi truck. I was pulling out of my driveway and I have a picture of it. I'm happy to share it with everyone because I was that person backing out with my phone outside, taking a picture. It's captured. Cisco semi truck had pulled onto Stafford coming from Highland and is now behind me. So I just want to use that as an example of in everyone's best efforts, if you'll say the trucks won't come down and use back as a cut through, they are going to do it. They are doing it. I also have pictures on my Ring camera. 2:00 AM in the morning, huge, 18-wheeler Cisco trucks. Now granted, no one's out at that time, so is it a safe time? Sure. But Cisco delivery trucks are going down Stafford Road. So it's unavoidable. And to Nadine's point where, because of how things are changing in the world and, you know, demands and lack of resources and lack of drivers, people have to use larger vehicles. And so we're seeing it. I have pictures. I have things. So I just, it's important to preserve our neighborhoods and our roads and our streets and protection of our kids. We need a, we need something better. We need a, we need a better answer. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So, um, any questions from the board? And Ned, do you want to, I think maybe do you want to, you know, you've had some questions tonight from neighbors, different, different things that maybe you don't want to address right now, but maybe as a follow-up?
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll.
Especially the, like, for example, the loading, um.
We'll, we'll.
Possibly moving that.
Take a look at that and, and
Trash.
And other things and see how we can respond accordingly. We, you and I had talked about potentially doing the sewer connection. I know
I think it's the late hour.
And you've got other.
I was going to say, so continue, is that all right? If we can do that and, and continue that with our architect, um, at our next
That'll be great.
Meeting. And, um, we had tentatively said the 28th.
That's true. Works for us.
So, um, if that's good, I think we should, um, I would entertain a motion to continue.
I just have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Was, um, were we expecting Sean, anything else of Sean between now and then? We've talked about various things. You gave us a lot of opinions tonight, so I don't know if we need anything, but do we need anything in, from Sean?
I don't think by the 28th we need anything. Will you be able to join us on the 28th? Because
I can make a point too. And if, if anything comes up, Tim, Tim can reach out.
Certainly. All right. Sewer connections will be, um, yeah. And we, we plan to talk about architecture. That, cut and fill will be a big part of that. So. Yeah, so, okay.
So then, are you looking for a motion to continue?
Yes. And 111 Highland Street special permit.
I'll move to continue the 111 Highland Street special permit, um, public hearing to November 28th at 7:05.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. And now, thank you. We can now reopen our seven to nine Pleasant Street site plan modification, continued from October 12th. Welcome, our. Thank you for your patience in waiting. That's.
It is always very interesting to be on the other end of the list. So, thank you. I, actually, you're the ones that must have a lot of patience. I mean, really, it's
Oh, it's, it's all important.
It's amazing. It's amazing that you're still here. But you have to be, I guess.
It's amazing you're still here, Ms. McGettrick.
That's, and sometimes I do say that myself. But I like to put my pajamas on at 7 o'clock. I'm sorry. So, um, yes. When you're ready, I'll just break out a couple of things here and then I'll be ready.
Hi, welcome. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Mary McGettrick. I represent the, I'm representing the applicant, um, Falcone Properties LLC. And this is the second hearing before the planning board for a site plan approval application and a modification of a site plan approval. The proposal is to try to create some additional parking to serve the Bentz Building. This is a mixed-use building that the planning board and the Board of Appeals approved in 2019. I'm just very, I'm going to spend about two seconds because you've already heard this, but in case somebody else hasn't. At that time, Falcone Properties owned the Bentz property, and that was all they owned. What they did do was before undertaking that project, they did have an attorney go to land court and, um, successfully completed what's called a quiet title procedure in order to have a title to the right-of-way that runs up the, the left side of the property, which did give them some room to create some.
which did give them some room to create some parking in back of the building. And that proposal also included removing an existing apartment in the back of the building and creating a mixed-use consisting of a cafe on the first floor, catering, it's on the ground floor, catering business on the ground floor, five apartments on the first floor, and 3,500 square feet of commercial office space on the second floor. And there was a parking plan approved by you. We also had to go to the Board of Appeals. There were special permit modifications and variances. It was a very complicated application for a pre-existing non-conforming commercial building in a residential district. And ultimately, after quite a few hearings and a lot of meetings with neighbors, the proposal was approved, the parking plan was approved. There were 18 spaces off the street in the back of the building. Some of them were fairly difficult to use. For example, there were four tandem parking spaces in the rear of the parking area that were for employees. There really wasn't specifically short-term parking designated. And along the driveway is really room for two-way traffic. It's designed for two-way traffic, but the only place to do any parking at all was right next to the building. So, quick summary, that's what was approved. Subsequently, two years later, Falcone Properties was able to purchase the adjacent property, which is what you're looking at tonight and looked at in September, which is 672 Randolph Ave. That, like the Bentz location, is a residential, is in a residential C-zone. This is all residential property. And so, the first thing that Falcone Properties did was to renovate the house a little bit and then find a tenant. They have a family in there, very happily living there, and very pleased to be there and hopefully will be there for a long time. But that, when that tenant leaves, they will continue to tenant the property. In other words, they are using the house, continuing to use it as a residential property. Many years ago, Bentz, the owners of Bentz owned 672 Randolph Avenue, and they used that residential property for, sometimes for employees. Sometimes they rented it, and they used the rear portion of the property to park trucks. And a major source of the wood for their ovens came from the rear of the property. That's just a little bit of history that Mr. Falcone explained to me. He has all the records and made the building out. He saved all of that information. But it's just interesting, because it was a very narrow site. It's hard to imagine how a large commercial enterprise managed. They had trucks back in 1920. They still had to do truck deliveries. We heard a lot about that tonight for new projects. Things must have been very busy on that site. As the years went by, the bakery, heart attack and that kind of thing, that reduced. And ultimately, the building had the cafe in the first floor. They'd still use the bakery ovens and had some wonderful baked goods and the broken cookies, some of us remember going to get there. But it wasn't a big operation, and the building really wasn't successful economically. So what Falcone Properties has done is taken this building and made it a success. The, all of the property is tenanted, and all of the tenants are very happy to be there, from what I hear. And the parking is barely adequate. We knew that was going to be the case. We, that was, from a zoning standpoint, you could have less than the required amount of parking, because this was a pre-existing non-conforming commercial use. And the prior manufacturing use actually would have required something like 38 parking spaces. There was nothing like that. There was almost no parking. So this was a compromise, limited parking. And what we're proposing now is to try to improve the parking situation by adding some, an additional parking area in the back of 672 Randolph Avenue. The challenge is, first of all, it's a residential lot. It needs a use variance. So we met with the Board of Appeals on Monday night. That was our first meeting. And they just listened to testimony, basically, listened to our presentation. The next hearing is not until middle of January, so we're not fast-tracking this application at all. We think that we need time to continue to work on optimal design, if we can find it, and to meet directly with the two neighbors that have some property that abuts this and to see what we can do to make the property, the proposal as as little intrusive as possible. That's the best way to put it. It's only a parking lot. So tonight, we've, on October 24th, we sent you some revised plans. Those were based on comments at the last hearing. So the revised plans include these changes. You've probably read, I hope you've read the little memo that we sent. But basically, just to quickly summarize, parking area size has been reduced and the number of parking spaces has been reduced. I mean, five fewer spaces now. The way the size was reduced in this proposal before you right now was by bringing the right-hand edge back in. So now there's a 45-foot setback on that side instead of a 20-foot setback. That's the side where the rear of two neighbors' lots is up on this property. Parking space has been reduced. There are now 16 spaces in the new parking area, 12 spaces remaining in the existing parking area. Only 12 remain. First of all, because you have to remove spaces to make an entrance. And secondly, we took away the tandem parking, which is, tends to not be used. So the employees tend to just park in the other parking spaces. And we have short-term parking spaces now alongside the Bentz Building. So those are just short-term parking spaces. They're not regular parking spaces. They do count in the total. But they, so fencing now has, in any proposal, even if we change the configuration now, there will be fencing like the fencing around the Bentz parking lot. That's a seven-foot wooden fence. It's quite attractive. And the lighting system has been changed, so that it's now the same as the lighting system existing in Bentz now. So the lighting is inside the fence. It's a seven-foot fence. We did a new photometric plan. There is zero lighting overspill outside the fence going towards neighboring apartments. No light holes, nothing up high that you're going to see all the time. We did some work on the landscaping. It's not all arborvitae now. You know, it's a mixture right now of red maple and arborvitae. At the corner, which right now is still the, one corner, this is still 20 feet from the back of two neighbors' lots, there's a cluster of arborvitae, because, or it will be some kind of evergreen tree that's fast-growing and very thick. The purpose of those, of the evergreens trees, which we have to have, are that they provide better screening. The purpose of the red maples, or whatever trees there are going to be, is to be more attractive. So this is something we talked about at the last meeting, just a little bit. We did fail to, we didn't quite accurately identify abutting properties, because there's 678 Randolph Avenue, it belongs to the Mize's. And then there's a vacant lot in between that and 688 Randolph Avenue. That wasn't identified as an abutting lot, but it's owned by the owners of 688 Randolph Avenue. That's Caitlin Manning. So we now identified that. So it's just, you know, this is an A&R plan, but the abutters should always be identified as the ones with the greatest interest in what happens here. And finally, drainage plans. In the plan we showed you at the first hearing, not all the drainage structures were shown. It just wasn't the most up-to-date plan. You now have a drainage, a plan that shows you all the structures. And we have also sent the stormwater management plan. We were talking about that again in the previous hearing. Not all applications require a conservation review. There's no conservation issue on this property. But we did, but the applicants have prepared a full stormwater management plan, and all the calculations is about 150 pages. That's with the town engineer. We have no feedback yet on that, so you'll want to be getting feedback and you'll want to see whether there are any questions and concerns from the town engineer. If the plan, if the configuration of the parking lot changes, if we continue to do design work and the stormwater management plan has to be adjusted, it will be. But it is in the hands of the town right now. We're kind of curious to see. We have here tonight Bob Falcone, of course, is with me. But on Zoom, we have our engineer. And we're hoping, Paul Gunn, this is his name. I'm hoping Paul has survived listening to the previous hearing. If he is, I'd like to ask him to share screen if for some reason he wasn't able to. So is Paul here? He should be made a panelist.
He's being made a panelist right now.
Okay.
And then if Paul would pull up the plan, he's going to explain the drainage plan. We didn't talk about that much at the last meeting. And then I'm going to ask him, after that, to display the layout for the parking area. And maybe we can have just a little bit more discussion about that. While he's doing that, just a couple more comments I wanted to make. The total, so I gave you a parking analysis. You asked for that at the last meeting. And basically, the question was, is this over-parking? I mean, are you creating too many parking spaces, more than you really need? We did actually reduce the number of spaces, primarily because we wanted to bring the edge of the parking lot back. But then, when I did the analysis, I found it kind of interesting. It just happened to come out to 28 spaces, which is the number of spaces we now have. That is the total number of spaces in the existing lot remaining. And the new lot, the spaces in the new lot are 16 spaces. And the way that breaks down is, if you required off-street parking for the cafe, which is a restaurant, usually we require one seat for every two and a, one parking space for every two and a half seats. So that would be rounding up seven parking spaces. For commercial office space in a business district, the town requires one parking space for every 250 square feet of commercial space. We didn't do, we didn't accommodate, we didn't even address, really, parking for the catering business. I'm counting it as commercial space. That's another 350 square feet. So if you add those two together, you have 3,850 square feet of commercial space. Rounding up again, that would require 16 parking spaces. And then finally, we have these small five apartments in the first floor, above the ground floor. And the agreement was that it would be adequate to have one space for each apartment. So that's five spaces, and the total of those spaces is 28. So right now, three of those, two of those spaces are along the building, and they're part-time parking spaces, or they're short-term parking spaces. Those, that short-term parking off-street is a specific request from the police department. That's the only request we've had since this building came into operation. And what they've said is, people are coming, as you might expect. They come to pick up their food, and if they don't have a space right there, they're double parking. They don't want that. That's not a very safe location at all for double parking. So while it's not the overall purpose or the only purpose for this proposal, I want the planning board to keep in mind that that's a safety issue. We really do need some more parking here. Then it gets down to the question of, how much money are you willing to spend to create a parking lot for how many, you know? Right now, we're doing a lot, proposing a lot of work, including a drainage system, which doesn't even exist right now on this second lot. We're proposing spending a lot of money to create a net increase of 12 parking spaces. That's an investment Falcone Properties is willing to make, to make this building work as well as it can. There is no proposal to change the uses. There is no proposal to increase the volume of traffic going in and out. This will be the same traffic that we're dealing with now, but more of it is parking on the street right now. And I know that's a concern. The neighbors have said, if you're doing this parking lot, you must be planning something big. And that, that's just not the case. This is a sort of unusual circumstance where Falcone Properties is able to assume this additional expense and is willing to do this if it makes the building that they've already created, this historic building renovation project, if it makes it work better. So that's a quick summary of the changes. And if Paul, if it's okay with the board, I'd like Paul to just take over, show the drainage page for the plans, which I think is, well, whatever page he chooses.
Yep. Is he in, Paul?
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
You can share screen, Paul, and talk about the drainage plan, and then we'll go back to the layout of the parking.
Hello, everyone. So just for the record again, my name is Paul Gunn. I'm a design engineer at Morrison Engineering. Here to talk about the current layout revisions for the proposed drainage system for the expanded parking area. With this iteration of the site and parking layout, the general scheme of the drainage has not been altered significantly from the original conception. The revision did include removing six of the proposed spaces, which has resulted in an increase in the proposed pavement area of a little over 1,700 square feet. The entire parking area is still proposed to slope towards the north, towards 7 to 9 Pleasant Street and away from the residential abutters. Runoff will be contained to the new parking area by a pre-cased concrete curb that is to be six inches in height. This northerly flow is then to be intercepted by a set of two deep-sump hooded catch basins, which in turn direct the stormwater to a set of subsurface infiltration chambers embedded in crushstone. Several test pits were conducted at the proposed area of infiltration to confirm groundwater and soil characteristics. And as Marion previously mentioned, our drainage calculations to confirm the efficacy of the proposed system were all submitted to the DPW for a review. I believe that's all I have in regards to the revisions to the proposed drainage system. I'll turn it back to Marion and the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. And now, Paul, could you display the parking layout page?
Yeah, absolutely.
While he's doing that, I know that in your, I think it's in your memo, Marion, you said it was that stormwater design was submitted to the town engineering or to the DPW. Have you heard back from them yet?
No, I did send an email yesterday just asking if she's had a, I sent it to the town engineer.
Okay.
I know it takes a while. She has a lot of work to do. And I said, this isn't being fast-tracked. In fact, if we make any slight modifications or more modifications to layout, possibly there could be a change to the drainage. So, but I just wanted to know if she'd looked at it initially, because it's important to get some feedback in case there's anything she thinks requires further work. So I'll just be continuing to check and hope to get some feedback. And then, of course, we go to you, we go to the planning board. I just, so that's our presentation as such. I already had sent the information to you in the letter. We made a couple of minor corrections in the, in the plan itself, so we've sent a couple of updated versions, but it's the same layout, right?
Yeah, I think Sean, at the, at the end of the last meeting, had asked whether it's possible to rotate that new layout to align with the angle of the parcel on the right. And, you know, I went over, took a drive over today and, you know, was looking. And now, thinking about that, is the fencing going to come back and make a triangle in that back corner of the property? Are you stopping the fencing on the right side there? Now, I'm just wondering if you thought about it, or if you looked at rotating that lot so that it does turn away more? Because I, you know, I'm kind of looking at the GIS again and trying to understand, you know, the relationship of those neighboring properties that we heard from those neighbors last time. And it does seem like if you turn it, you're like really facing everything more towards the woods.
So... Yeah. So, so we started, we started to do that. And in fact, one neighbor saw a very general concept plan for a turn and said, you'll hear from the neighbors, so I'll let them speak themselves. But then he thought that might be better.
Okay.
There, I wasn't sure how much better it was. And so initially, because this is the same layout for drainage and everything, I thought they should try this, because it moves the edge of the lot away. Problem is that little corner, that corner that's close to the two neighbors is still close.
And then it kind of leaves a, you know, kind of an awkward triangular spot between the two parking, the two paved areas. And it just, like, what happens there? I mean, and I know some of it's wooded. I'm trying to understand how many trees might come down. And if that's, if that's saving trees, we don't really have an accurate, I think, count of the trees. But if it saves trees, and I can see a benefit to it? So just asking, you know, more questions about it, really.
Turn it, the way you have, I have a picture of it, you're definitely cutting down more trees.
Okay.
Pretty much, they kill the trees from the line of, I don't know, the town land or the farmland, I'm unsure, that's behind us.
No, it's, it's a land that belongs, that's all Zazula land.
Yeah.
That's all Zazula, Greg Zazula, who's deceased, his property is in probate. The land has been, was zoned in 2017 for an assisted living use. It may never become an assisted living, but the zoning is there. Again, I can't predict whether that's going to happen, but it could. So it's a factor that we were thinking about a little bit. So you would have to take more trees down.
So can you...
Plant more trees in another location.
So I guess it would be helpful if you could show us the sketch, you know? It doesn't have to be engineered. And if you could show us where those trees are. So at least we have an understanding of the trade-offs between the two options. And then definitely, it'd be beneficial... And then definitely, it'd be beneficial to hear from the neighbor, the closest neighbor there. Because, do you know what the distance, actually, it's there, it's on that plan, right? The distance between the fence and the property is 20 feet?
It's 20 feet at the closest point.
It's to the line now, it's to the property line. The fence, it's 21 feet, it's actually more like 28 feet. I was there the other day. And, but the house is 100 feet away.
Right.
Not property line. And this other neighbor is down here, but he has a finished backyard. So he's not that close to the fence. But if you turn this square parking lot that way, all these parking stalls and out here, it actually goes deeper into the lot.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It goes deeper into the lot.
Okay.
And see, just take this lot and turn it. So now you have all the parking along here and into here. And this is, this is very heavily treated here.
It's a dilemma as to whether, because.
So we're trying to do it, I mean.
The rear view, the rearmost view from the two neighbors was the concern we heard about at the planning, at the Board of Appeals meeting Monday night. And we heard about it a little bit at the previous hearing, but in more detail. And it was clearer to me that because of the impossibility of using the front of your yard when you face Randolph, the rear yard is important.
Right.
So even though it might go up in elevation or whatever, it's still an area that's definitely going to be used and is important. So what's better? And what's the least you can do and still make it useful if you're going to try to do some parking? So there's some more work there. We had, I hesitate to show a drawing at this point. We had a sketch. What I would say would make more sense is that we think that we should meet with the neighbor, particularly the Mize, but also the other neighbor, one-on-one, probably at the property, but with a sketch, couple of sketches, and try to visualize what, whether it's better to have that longer row of parking that you're looking at, but at a greater distance. It may be, because here's the thing. I mean, you're going to plant trees in between, and you're going to be planting evergreens. And if you look at the, at the library, or you look at the new mixed-use building in East Milton, in between the, I think there's law offices in that building, there's some really great thick evergreens. They're big, you just cannot see through them. And they're really tall, so, and they grew very quickly. So it is possible to provide very effective screening. If you have a little bit more room, you can provide two rows of evergreens instead of one. And you can still have a mixture of hardwoods and, you know, just to make it look nicer. So it, that's why it's a little, so we don't know whether this is the best plan. It's better because it moves the parking lot back. And we, we're more than willing to look at, you know, other, some of this configuration that you're talking about in a little bit more detail. But we want to look at it with the neighbors. And we, we didn't have a chance to meet one-on-one. I think Mr. Falcone did meet with one, one neighbor. We haven't met with the Mize because they had an attorney. I think their attorney now is withdrawn. And when there's an attorney, the attorney has to contact the attorney. And it just takes more time and everything. So we, we would like to make more progress in terms of getting together and looking at how this would work. And I don't want to take hours and hours of your time before we've come up with what we think is the best we can do. That's how I would put it. We're not going to go, you need to understand, the Board of Appeals, although this is, you know, it's a use variance, which is a tough standard to me, they would, they want to know whether the planning board is satisfied with the design from the standpoint of site plan and design. They want you to, if you, they want something close to a decision. If you're not close to a decision in mid-January, we're going to continue even longer. Unless we decide we can't do it or something. But, you know, so in terms of your own scheduling and your time, I don't suggest, well, it's up to you. I know you're meeting on the 28th, and I know you have to hear from neighbors tonight. But I'm not sure that that's enough time, the 28th.
No, because I don't want to be behind the memory center, thank you. I have a sick wife at home that I should be home with, who should be living in the memory center.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's hard for all of you, I know that, you all have families. But that's one reason. And the other reason is that, you know, Thanksgiving is coming. It's a little, two weeks is pretty short, actually.
Yep.
Yeah, it is.
We have the town meeting coming up beginning December. So you'll get back to it, but, you know.
I would suggest that, that 14th, maybe December 14th, would be our next continuance date.
And when you meet with the neighbors, it might be helpful to stake the proposed lot corners and maybe the fence corners so that they can get a visual understanding of where it would go. I think it's always helpful.
Yep, thank you.
And meeting on site, this topography is very unusual all along this edge of Randolph Ave. It's hard to really understand it unless you're standing right on it, even from my perspective, because I'm short, I can't see over that fence in the parking lot. So, you know, maybe I'll be able to come along in that, but I'd like to see you.
And I'm just, you know, when I went there today, there's a lot of, you know, turns in the fence, and a lot of fence, and I see fence, more fence now. And I feel like there's these awkward outdoor spaces. And so bear that in mind as you lay it out to whether.
Making a more combined space.
Yeah, I mean, just like the spaces, the leftover space is just, it, it just seems, and if it's because the trees, and you're going to say existing trees, then that makes a lot more sense to me. But then I'd be much more considerate of how much fence you, you need. Like, do you really need then the fence along the, the existing parking spaces? Do you, do you do an island of planting and make that one? Do you know, you know what I mean?
That's where we need the time to think about that.
To think that a little through more.
Yep, we, we get that.
Yeah, and, and to talk, and for the planning board to talk to the neighbors about that too. I'm not a landscape designer, I don't know what's possible, but.
This is my, you know, Marion's heard this before, about getting a landscape architect, you know, versus an engineer to work on the landscaping plant. And I know a lot of engineering firms can, you know, provide both services, but a lot also have the landscape architects on staff. So it's, it's just, there's a different training, you know, for the design of the landscape versus the engineering. And so I, I, I think it could be beneficial. But I'm not insisting that you have that. It's just that these are things that, as I look at this plan, I think could benefit from.
You've got to understand, you know, it's in a woodsy site. There already is, there's a lot of rock and ledge outcroppings.
Yeah, and it just seems like such a narrow fenced-in area back there. And does it really need to be? And then you're going to have a narrow triangle of fenced-in area again. And I don't know if there's any, you know, wildlife there that wants to move around and get stuck between fences, but anyway.
Okay, well, we think, we'd like to sit down and let you take input from anybody who wants to.
Yeah, we've got some neighbors.
Be interested in that as well, so.
Okay.
I'll leave my papers up here in case they have to come back.
Right.
Thank you.
So would that date, if we do have a motion, the 28th? I mean, the 14th of December?
You want to hear a public comment?
I do, yeah, but I just wanted before she, if we make a motion, but I want to hear.
I have nowhere to go.
The 14th, okay. All right, that's good. All right, and welcome, please come.
Can we keep that map up there?
Certainly.
I'm Nick Sessor, Caitlin Manning, who was Caitlin Vallad, now.
Do you want to speak into the microphone so people can, and have a seat, yeah.
Caitlin Manning, who was the owner of the property. And I just want to speak to where the trees are there. On the whole property.
Want to hold the microphone? Just, you can take it with you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, just so.
On the entire property, there's two old-growth healthy trees. Okay? And I think one of them is going to end up in this parking lot. The other one is down here somewhere. But anything that's over here is all dead trees. I mean, I'm the one that's been maintaining it because these trees are falling over all the time, and they're leaning, and someone's got to cut them. And I've been the one that's cutting them. So, and up here, I don't think there's any trees at all. It's just scrubby brush. So basically, we're here for a variance per section 275-115. I can't see how, what the Falcone Properties is trying to do complies to the zoning requirements. We're years beyond the framework. I'm sorry. We're years beyond the timeframe allowed to seek a variance. Also, the zoning law speaks to a 25% increase in parking. I've heard all different numbers to how many additional cars there will be. But in short, we are talking about a lot that's almost 100% bigger than the lot they have now. And again, no matter how you sugarcoat it, it is going to be 16 or more cars in our backyards. I'd like to speak to the enormity of this lot. We've never heard from anyone what the dimensions are before Monday's meeting with the Board of Appeals. The new downsized lot is 72 feet by 86 and a half feet. Just to give you some perspective, and since we've been talking about fire trucks, from the back of this building to the fire station is 78 feet. So again, we're talking about an enormous area in a residential zone. Also, Falcone Properties say, and they're adamant about, they're not expanding. If that's true, if, and before now, they've been zoning law compliant, why do they need an additional 16-plus space parking lot? If they've been doing it right along and they're not expanding, I don't need, I don't see why they need this humongous lot. And still, they talk about, they, you know, they've made it smaller and this and that. It's still 20 feet from my neighbor's lot and 21 feet from my daughter's lot. Beyond all this, I take it as a personal insult that Mrs. McGetrick thinks my family should acquiesce to all of this because it pales as compared to the possible development that may happen behind our homes five or six years from now. This rhetoric, this rhetoric was expressed at least a half a dozen times Monday at the Board of Appeals meeting. But that project isn't why we're here now. I'm asking once again, please stop the zoning creep. This is not Brockton Fall River or some other city. This is a residential zone. This is our backyards. This is the town of Milton. We're better than this. Please protect the residential zone and the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to come? Hi.
Hi there, welcome.
My name is Emma Mai, and my husband and I own 678 Randolph Ave. So we're the direct abutters to this, and we live there with our three children. So this backyard, this is where we play. This is, you know, their yard, basically. All right. This new plan does not make enough impactful changes to make the parking lot fit into a residential area. The parking lot is still 20 feet away from our property line, which is the absolute bare minimum allowed by the zoning laws. The parking lot addition, as it is designed, does not work. It doesn't feel like a natural addition to the neighborhood. As it currently stands, the design has the parking lot consuming as much space as it can get away with. It juts outward towards our backyards instead of being a modest addition to the parking lot that already exists. We understand the Bents building needs extra parking. However, the parking lot as currently designed is too large, and it encroaches on our property, on our backyard, and on our peace and safe space outside for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from any members?
We've got one person on the Zoom.
Okay, we can let them in?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Yeah, hi, I'm Ryan Vallard, I'm at 688 Randolph Ave. Nick Sessor, who already spoke, is my father-in-law. So he kind of covered a lot of what I wanted to say. But I do have a couple of questions that I was like, you know, Mrs. McGetrick and the Falcone Properties to possibly think about. One of them is, you know, the whole time we're talking about the parking spots, never once really has it mentioned that there's seven parking spots up front. I made the mistake thinking that Election Day, Milton had, you know, elections. So I decided to take my daughter and walk to Cunningham. As I was walking back, at the high time of the business, which would be lunch, there was a landscaping truck parked in two parking spots. So not one, but two parking spots were taken up because of, you know, for landscaping at 672 Randolph Ave and for the Pleasant Street building. So if this, if this parking lot was so needed, that landscaping truck wouldn't have the space. And now, not only did that truck take up two spots, there were still four more parking spots that were available for use that were not being used. So those seven parking spots now take away from what is going into the back. I mean, I kind of got ahead of myself first. We don't want the spot, we don't want the lot. So this is more of if the lot is put in, there are seven parking spots out front that were not being used really, other than for landscaping. So can seven spots be taken from the back and be used in the front? My, my second question was about spinning the, the parking lot, making a parallel that was already brought up. So are there plans to that that are drawn up? And if we could see them at a future time, I think we will when we meet with, with the group. And my last question would be, when we do meet with them, would anyone from the planning board be available to come and meet with us, with Falcone and Mrs. McGetrick? So next time we have a meeting and we speak on this, there's someone there on the board that will have, you know, more knowledge that we can, you know, either bounce off of them, maybe they remember something that we forget, and vice versa. So that, I'll yield back.
Thank you. Tim, is that something that you would be able to facilitate? Or have them come meet, or meet on site?
I mean, if you all want to like organize a site walk, that's, that's something. But otherwise, you know, it depends on if you, I mean, who wants to go? When do you want to do it? We can, we can figure that all out. I mean, we're all here right now.
I just wanted to say that when we did the original application for Bents, we did have at least one meeting with, you know, I don't remember which neighbor it was, but one of the, a couple of the close neighbors. And one person from the planning board was at that meeting, was willing to attend the meeting. I don't remember who it was. It's, it can be very helpful. I know you have a lot to do, so, but if you want to, if you want to do a site walk, that's a different story than, you know, you have to post it.
Maybe we could circulate an email and we could, you know, see who's interested. You know, Sean's not here tonight. You know, I think it might be a number, like a couple of discussions, so.
Yeah, and also in terms of alternate plans, and I understand all the comments that we've heard, we probably need a little time to have a couple of conceptual sketches prepared before we do. So if, if we could sort of signal to you.
That you've got something.
We're going to be asking for a meeting with the neighbors. If you want to have somebody from the planning board come, and there's someone who's willing, that's fine. And if you want to do a site walk, this would be a good time. I'm not sure how long that will take, so.
Would it be, would it be helpful to have a site walk before you do the plans? Or after you do the plans? Or what, do the neighbors have a preference?
I mean, I, I don't know, I was never, I've never been on the planning board. I was on the Board of Appeals many years ago. Sightwalks always helped me a lot. I don't know what your time is, but doing a site walk, I think, would be very helpful in this situation, just because it's an unusual topography. You want to look at the trees, you heard some comments about the existing trees. And we can certainly make arrangements to be, you know, you, you can do that. There's a tenant in the house, so we need to provide notice to the tenant that there would be a group of people wandering around.
Because I would hate for you Because I would hate for you to go through the effort and time and redo a plan.
Yeah.
Then we go out, you know.
That's a good idea.
And then have.
I've been to the site, but it would be helpful to walk and, you know.
But I also don't want to overstep either.
That's fine, right? I think a site walk's a good idea. I expected you might, if you had time, that you would want to do it this one.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to respond to a couple of comments. Not only do Falcone sometimes use the front parking spaces for their landscaping trucks, everybody in the neighborhood uses those spaces, including immediate neighbors. Um, that's part of the problem with counting public parking spaces as available parking. They're not always available. Um, they do get used a lot. And the, the key, the key problem there that was brought to our attention was that people might, people were double parking. That's how much they were being used during busy times. Um, but it's also true, you know, the, the, um, there are times when, it's important to point out here, this parking area, if, if it is built in some form, it will be used during the week primarily, you know, the, the extra spaces are primarily important when everything's open. So the businesses are open during the day, during the week. Cafe's open on the weekend. Catering business is open on the weekend. Nothing's open at night. There are five apartments here who park and they might have a guest. Or there might be an emergency and, you know, someone have to come in and repair something. There's nothing being used at night here, so.
So lighting is, is an important consideration then, and then also whether you can close that lot off. And so it's not, you know, available and therefore, I mean, a dark lot at night is also, you might want to consider safety. But if you had, you know, it, it's just that if, since it is in people's backyards and you didn't have to light it at night, it would.
Yeah, but they're not, yes, we, we'll talk about anything, but the lights do not show.
No, zero.
That's why you should, you should also visit the site at night anytime you want.
The lights were on actually this afternoon about two o'clock when I went there.
The trouble with that unfortunately is we're going to move the residential parking to the first five or six parking spots.
Right at the corner by the building though.
Because where the residential people park are getting, that's the issue of why we do this parking lot. The people that come into the, to the restaurant to eat, you sit there, there's, there are sixteen seats there. They're using me around. They do sit outside. Just park in the residential spots and there's signs there, do not park in residential. People don't, you know, they're driving the front door for wide enough. And they park in the residential spots. So we're constantly inundated with calls. Someone's in my spot. I came home. I had a box somewhere else. That's what we're trying to head off. So at night, to close it off would make sense, but most of the parking lot, it's only sixteen lot parking lots, only twelve net.
Yeah, well, the net, yeah.
It's only a net of twelve parking lots.
The irony of it is to you going to all this trouble to produce net twelve new spaces.
But, you know.
Quite difficult to do.
So that's what.
And you're right. I mean, everybody's correct. The, the area that's being created has to be large enough in order to have enough spaces because you're reducing spaces that already exist. So it's, it's a difficult.
Yeah, the, I think you could work on that layout and have it be a more efficient layout too and have less paving.
Well, hopefully we can.
Get your design team to work on it, yeah.
Or even do a, like a parking lot like the library has, that has a planting bed in the middle. And it has a rain garden, which nobody ever knows, and that might help with your drainage.
Yeah, I mean, I heard the comments and, and they're good comments and interesting ones in terms of design. And I, so without saying more, that's interesting. I don't know. I mean, it, it doesn't make it smaller if you do that. And, um, and I don't know how visible any of this is going to be with the fencing, but it's something to target.
Yeah, I mean, one thing for me is like to have evergreen planting, this screening for every landscape solution is not as creative as like, you know, a habitat for butterflies and bees or, or whatever, but rabbits or whatever it is. You know, just a little bit more diversity in the landscape. So if I'm with Maggie, um, on that rain garden, if there's a way to do that, yeah.
And instead of.
It's a parking lot. It's not going to be commercial creep. I'm sorry. It's a parking lot. If I, why would I go to the expense of spending a lot of money to build a parking lot and then tear it down and put a two-family there?
Well, I also wonder, I mean.
You buy a two-family all over town, right?
It, it's just like.
Pretty soon.
The, um,
Pretty soon.
The, the employee spots are kind of an awkward, you know, as you know too. So if you can make it, if somehow because you turn it, you can kind of make that work differently.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I think you'd be beneficial. Yeah, okay.
All right, so it sounds like a site walk is, is the best next step. So we can have, and with the neighbors, the neighbors can come. We can walk the site and talk, so, with everybody.
And you, you will have, um, the neighbors need to provide fact information to the time to it, so they can be about the site. Just say in general, because we don't.
It'll be posted, public, it'll be.
It will be, but.
But just so they know, I think that would be nice to let them know.
Provided to the planning department, Tim.
To Tim Churwinski, just email it.
Does that sound good?
Sounds great, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
So with that, um, I would entertain a motion to continue the seven-nine Pleasant Street Site Plan Modification to December fourteenth. Is there a motion from?
I'll make a motion to continue the seven-nine Pleasant Street, um, hearing till the fourteenth.
Second, seven oh five?
Sure, seven oh five sounds great.
All right.
At seven oh five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And so the, the next item is, um, because we really haven't had a discussion, um, Ivan approached, I think Maggie sent a picture, someone had sent to you, concerned that the Walcott Woods, the special permit regarding, um, some of the walls that are retaining walls. And I'm, the question is, is it more than just those two intermittent streams that are, are having to cut, um, precast, um, stone? And so I thought it might be a good idea for us to go take a walk out there and, and take a look. Um, I also know there's been some issue with, um, some, um, some stormwater, um, drainage issues also on the site. I thought it might be good to sort of see what, what maybe that looks like. So, Tim, do you want to comment on anything? You, you talked to Jack, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I did check in and, and, um, we, we, we all got Maggie's email. Um, I think it was actually a few weeks ago at this point, um, you know, just kind of raising the question of, you know, we, we had had, you know, uh, an application for a potential, you know, minor change to the special permit regarding, um, the materials of the retaining wall, which, um, you know, the board raised some questions about, um, the applicant withdrew that application. Um, and then, you know, um, you know, there was this visual of, of what appeared to be a retaining wall made out of the exact material that the board said that they weren't interested in seeing. So I, I did check in with Jack Dolly from Northland about this. Um, the section on stone walls, or I think it's just retaining walls in the special permit, um, specifically identifies those two locations where there is a retaining wall over, I believe it's intermittent streams. And, and the special permit does permit those walls to be made out of that precast concrete material. Um, and, and so Jack confirmed that that location in the photograph was one of those locations. So, um, you know, the good news is, is we're, we're not dealing with, you know, a, a kind of flagrant violation of something that the board only just very recently articulated was an issue. But, you know, I, I, I think the, the idea of a site walk down there, you know, is, is still, I think, a pretty good one. Um, you know, I don't know if, if folks check out Walcott Woods every now and again, it's obviously coming along. But I, I, I think, you know, just kind of taking a site walk and, and, and seeing where things are and, and kind of, you know, being able to put your eyeballs on, you know, some of those issues that you may be hearing from, from the residents is, is still probably a good idea.
Okay. So is, do we want to pick a date? But I think maybe Tim could send something out, but Maggie, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, no. So I just, um, so just to confirm, you know, just what happened was, um, you know, someone came into the nursery and I know she lived up there. And I said, oh, what are your thoughts on the wall? And then I said, do you like it? Because it's a stone wall. And then she said, oh, no, they just built these precast ones. So, um, she then sent me pictures. So I was just a little concerned, just like Tim said about the whole, um, the whole process. So I understand now that that was approved. Um, and so we don't really have any jurisdiction over that. So, um, so I just am wondering, do we reach out? Should I reach out to, um, the woman and let her know or how do I, what's the, the correct process?
I, well, I think it would be good for us just to go out there and see, um, because there's two locations with.
I, I took a drive out there and I, I saw one location where it was crossing. And that's where the only place I saw that installed. Um, and I went pretty much to where the construction was happening and had to stop at the construction in two places. So I only saw that, that one location. Everything else was stone wall. But, so I think, you know, it's fine to go take a look and see how things are progressing. But if, if that's the only location thus far, then yes, it was.
Maybe we should each take a drive individually and just see if we, um, are seeing it in other locations. Maybe that, yeah.
But I, I do think, you know, um, it was, it, I don't remember how long ago it was that I went, drove through there, but a lot has been built since the last time I, I did go through. So if you haven't been lately, it is worth checking out and.
That's what I thought I saw when I drove through, um, in a rear, sort of a backyard, which looked like a retaining wall, but it wasn't a, a part of a roadway. It was just.
Okay, I could have missed something, you know.
So that, my understanding is those intermittent street, there was over dry, over two different, um, like bridges of sorts. Um, and this was more of in a backyard.
So that was just my concern, because when he came, I specifically asked, were the neighbors of the property notified? And he said, no.
Of a potential change?
Of the, correct. So that is why when she came in, I was, um, you know, and we started talking. So it's sort of sent up a red flag. So, um, you know.
They, I will say that they have come to the planning board a number of times for any small or large change. So I, um, I have no reason to suspect that they would have done something that they knew wasn't in the permit. And so, um, and, and they've been seemingly understanding that permit pretty well, unlike some others that have happened in town.
I agree.
And it's still very, it's very pretty. I don't mean to, um, you know, speak badly. It's a very, it's, it's a very pretty, um, site.
All right, so why don't I'll, I'll just, we should each go out there on our own, you know, and just take a drive around and see if there's anything that doesn't look like it's an inter, in a, uh, intermittent stream.
But, you know, if we want to request that, you know, Jack or someone from, you know, the company, give us a general walkthrough, I don't, I don't mind, you know, having that. It's not bad to just, I mean, it would just be informational. There's no, no, um.
And my concern is just between, it's the holidays are coming up, so, um, I don't know how much of a rush.
I don't think it needs to be a rush.
Okay, because I would.
Yeah, no.
My time is limited between now and.
Right, and we have a lot, yeah.
Christmas, so I wouldn't want to schedule, I wouldn't.
And if we're going to do the site walk, you know, for Pleasant Street, that, you know.
Yeah.
That we, we need to get scheduled too. Okay. All right, so that, I just wanted to bring it to people's attention and if we do want to do a site walk. But I, I plan on taking a drive back myself and, you know, we can, um, at some point, it would be really nice to get sort of a, a tour and, you know, see how things are progressing, so. They're beautiful, beautiful units up there.
It's really nice back.
Yep, so, okay, great. So let's move on, um, unless there's anything else, Tim, on that that you have. Nope, okay.
Nope.
Okay, so the last thing that we have is the old, um, old business. It's ten thirty right now.
You had someone who asked if they could speak early on tonight, and you asked them to wait until now on the, on the MBTA community, so maybe we should hear them?
I apologize, absolutely. I would love to hear, yes, from, thank you for that reminder. And then, um, yeah, I think anyone who would like to speak, and I see somebody in the public who would like to also speak, so.
Yeah, and, and just as a, a really quick update, um, you know, we, I, I, I had asked RKG for kind of their availability to make sure we'd be able to get them in. And so, you know, there are a number of dates, including the twenty-eighth. So, um, we'll be hearing from RKG on the twenty-eighth. Um, I, I talked to Eric. Um, he'll be able to get, um, all of his materials in, um, the week prior. So, um, you know, a week from Tuesday, um, we'll, we, we should have, um, his analysis for, for everyone to review over, uh, turkey and cranberry sauce, um, over Thanksgiving, uh, before that meeting. And then also, um, in terms of, we, we just had a meeting, um, this afternoon with UTEAL. There are some, some visualization work that they've been doing, um, that they'll have prepared to be able to present on the twenty-eighth, um, as well as, uh, some, some other, some other work that we've been asking them to do. So, um, you know, all of that homework from our consultants, um, you know, they'll be available on the twenty-eighth to, to present all of that.
Fantastic. That's great. Okay. Um, so then we can, um, if, we usually start with somebody from the public. If you would, Matt, you come join us. And then we have Eric, I know, and who's been waiting patiently.
Okay, I'll keep this going. So, um, I just wanted to address what was discussed at the warrant committee meeting, um, where the, the planning board was present.
Matt, before you start, name and address, please.
Matt Morong, you should, you should know this by now, but for the record, Matt Morong on one thirty-six Elliot Street. So, yeah, so I want to respond to comments that came up during the course of the warrant committee meeting, um, I believe last week. Um, a lot of energy was focused on needing more time. And, you know, I've written you guys in the past about this, you know, that back, I guess it was January twenty twenty-two. You know, that's the, the first record I've heard of, um, this being discussed with the planning board. I remember Denny was chairman or chairperson at the time. You know, you've had a lot of time to work with this. So I'm, I'm surprised at the need for more time, but this has been, you know, the board has been aware of this for, for a long period. Moreover, um, you know, I, I also am concerned about the, the fact that the consultants are seemingly being blamed for some of the delay in this work. It's not a great look, and it feels like it's kind of passing the buck for the responsibility of the delay and the need for more time for this issue. You know, I, I feel like it's this board's responsibility to manage their consultants. Um, and, and I would, I would hope that as we move ahead in this process, assuming that there will be a continuation of this process, that both, you know, RKG and UTEAL are, are given clear goals, clear deadlines, and so on and so forth. I also think that, you know, as, as we proceed, I'd like to see a plan. I mean, I think that's what I'm coming back to say, is that, you know, there's this insistence that we need more time, but more time for what? Right? What are we going to achieve in this time? What are the goals? Um, and, and what is the timeframe that we're going to work with? Because, you know, we've seen that the process of getting to an article to, um, to town, to town meeting takes a great deal of time, takes a great deal of effort. And, and there are a lot of, I don't, I don't want to say impediments in the way, but there are a lot of milestones that you have to meet as you go through that process. So as we move ahead, I don't know exactly what this is going to look like as we move forward. Um, I hope that it's, we are moving forward with a, a way that we can make a compliant article that satisfies as many people's needs and it, you know, makes as many people kind of reach a consensus as possible. But I think that planning is really essential to this process, so I encourage that as you move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great, and Eric? If Eric is still with us, we can let him join us?
Hey, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Eric Okinson, five eighty-three Elliot Street, as some of you probably have memorized just as well. I'll, I'll cut out the comments. Uh, Matt actually took one of my, my comments, and I'll just ask questions. Uh, and, you know, the board can, can respond in their own time. But I, I do think that these are important questions, um, that, that not only, you know, myself as a resident, but, but town meeting more importantly deserves answers to. I know outside council's been discussed a few times, and I was curious if anyone at the town or on this board has requested copies of, uh, you know, the same audit that we got from our town council that have been provided to other communities, whether they're rapid transit or, you know, other communities. I assume that a lot of other towns and planning boards are asking about the legal ramifications of, of not compliance and, um, you know, whether it's Rockport, Holden, or Brookline, which was just in the Globe. That seems like free legal advice. Um, I don't know if the lawyers get together and just photocopy the same advice, but, um, it, it just seems like that would be, you know, more, um, yeah, frankly, free, free legal advice. And on the, the warrant committee meeting, uh, just a couple of comments. I wasn't sure why the planning board didn't notice its attendance at, at the. I wasn't sure why the planning board didn't notice its attendance at the warrant committee meeting. It just struck me as odd, given it does notice all of its, you know, even if it's gathering at the forum without the intention of speaking, it does make those notices public. And then I listened to the follow-up meeting where it was just the warrant committee. And it's really discouraging to hear so much factually incorrect information. And I'm, I'm not talking about opinions I disagree with or, you know, absurd claims about collusion by consultants or even just the net new units. But it seems like a disservice of the planning board to not correct these statements when the planning board are the elected representatives responsible for planning the future of our community. And I wasn't sure, and I know it's, you know, quote, a select board article. I really prefer to think of it as an article from Milton. But I'm curious if the planning board will be providing any necessary corrections or clarifications to the warrant committee based upon some of those comments or what may appear in the warrant articles or, you know, to others at town meeting. There's just been so much out there that it just, I think there's not enough conversation about what the actual facts are. Again, not opinions, but actual facts. And finally, regarding the report on the public hearing, I wasn't sure, there's, there's a lot of different opinions on the planning board. And I wasn't sure, you know, if it's something where only the majority gets presented or if the minority is also presenting their opinion, knowing that there might be a couple minority positions. I'm recalling the ADU article a couple of years ago where there was disagreement on the planning board and the minority report was presented for lack of a better word. So we're just kind of wondering about the process for that. So happy to explain any of my questions further if necessary. But again, appreciate your time, appreciate you being here, and thank you.
Great, thank you, Eric. I guess I can just begin. There are, you know, I believe what we have all been trying to do is much reading and looking into what other communities have been doing. And there is a wide variety of various legal opinions that are, that are currently existing in a variety of communities. We still are waiting to see what other communities, even within the first, you know, the rapid transit, the 12 communities that are within that category. We're still waiting to see what, you know, what many of those are still doing. Brookline, they actually have, they're the only other town meeting that will vote by town meeting. And we're, we're expecting to hear, I think, in the next couple of weeks.
They actually have their town meeting scheduled to begin on the 14th.
Starting on the 14th.
Yeah, and you know, just, I was looking for that date because I was curious where they were. And I did, when I was looking, noticed that they had posted their town council's opinion. I just downloaded it like a day or two ago and read it. And I did send it to Tim and maybe if you're interested, he can share it with the rest of us. And it's, it's a lot more, well, let's just say when I read it, I was like, oh, really? I mean, because this, this town council had some, some opinions that I think we'd all, everyone in town, you know, should take a look at and see what, you know, what this particular town council's advice to Brookline is and some of the thinking and logic behind it. Because in compliance, it really did see a lot of risk and a lot of risks that could come from a judge in, in law, through lawsuits, so.
That'd be great to share.
Yeah, so I mean, it's getting late, or I would read some sections over that I've highlighted, but we've all have been, you know, at late meetings here for a long time.
Please share that.
But I think, Tim, if you would share it with the rest of the members and, and we can start with that. Because, you know, when we talk about our, what we're going to be doing in terms of our recommendation, understand, having a, you know, someone else's opinion advising another one of our comparable communities, I think it's beneficial to think about compliance.
Certainly.
Yeah, but we also, as Peter Mello said, reasonable minds can disagree. So, you know, we can also look at the Rockport, you know, their reply and Holden.
But Rockport, it was citizens who filed a lawsuit against the town and against the state. It wasn't their town council fighting the state, so.
So Holden, we could do Holden. And, you know, I've, I've spoken to many attorneys and about what.
And if they can provide an opinion, you, you last time said that you were going to circulate some language, which I haven't received, but this one is an opinion that's on their website that's published. And if there's others that are out there that you want to share, then I think it's, it's, I'd be happy to read them. But, you know, just, you know, one thing I would say is that I would, I'm going to point out because one, in injunctive relief, beyond damages and fees. So initially, losing a federal civil rights case means paying the other side's market rate attorney's fees in addition to any damages awarded at trial. And then it's later says, beyond damages and fees, any suit against us will almost certainly ask a court to bring us into compliance with the act. That could be accomplished by holding us in contempt and charging us onerous monetary penalties until a bylaw is passed. More dangerously, a judge could simply cut us out of the equation and impose compliance zoning without local input. And it goes on to cite why these, you know, this is being warned. So, you know, I think it's, it's, you know, when we're going to be coming to a town meeting and making a recommendation to town meeting, we need to have as much information at our disposal as possible.
Absolutely. Great, yes, so just to go on. So, Tim, do you want to read why we did not post, just what you had read to me on when we were asked to come before the warrant committee as individuals to answer questions?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the first thing I'll say is that, you know, it wasn't, I don't think there was agreement that, you know, one or two or three or four or five members would go, would go to the warrant committee. I think it was sort of more of an organic situation there. But I mean, my interpretation of the open meeting law, you know, which obviously is, is there to make sure that, you know, public meetings of, of public bodies are publicly posted when there's going to be deliberations happening. There are a number of, I forget if they call them exceptions or exemptions from posting requirements. One of them, you know, famously is, you know, site visits. Those do not need to be posted as long as no deliberation takes place. And there's a lot of reasons, you know, why you would not want to post a public meeting where you're kind of going onto private property, et cetera, et cetera. One of the other exemptions is when members of a public body, you know, are allowed to attend and participate in the, the, in a meeting of another public body. And, you know, the sort of the stipulations there are participation has to happen in open session. So you're up at the table and the warrant committee is asking you questions and you're responding to those questions, you know, in open session. And also that, you know, deliberation isn't happening. So it's not the five members of the planning board up at the table kind of going back and forth, you know, with each other about an issue. It's, it's just like any other kind of testimony that happens in public meetings. You know, the, you know, an individual is testifying or speaking, you know, to the chair, you know, or to the full committee. So, I mean, you know, I, I think it's definitely, I don't want to call it, I don't, I don't consider it to be a gray area, but I'm not a lawyer. And also, I can also see that, you know, in a lot of cases, a lot of committees, you know, will, you know, play it super safe and just post everything. You know, this is something that, you know, the open meeting law tries to kind of, you know, understand that, you know, there are, there are kind of pros and cons to this sort of thing. I personally, I find it to be confusing sometimes when committees post meetings where there's not actually really a meeting happening. And so, you know, I think that's one of the reasons why those, those kind of exemptions in the open meeting law are there. But I mean, you know, I definitely understand why people would see that and say, hey, how, how come this wasn't posted? And really, it kind of hinges on kind of what is the definition of a deliberation? Again, you know, some, sometimes, you know, you want to play it super duper safe, you post it. I think, you know, because there wasn't sort of clear agreement on, you know, is this just going to be, you know, the chair is going to be there, is the whole board going to be there? You know, the, the open meeting law exemptions are there to sort of give you the opportunity to, as a board, you know, talk to another board if they make the request or the invite. So that was kind of the thinking, you know, behind the advice that I gave to Meredith, you know, when this issue came up. But, but again, you know, totally understand, you know, the optics of that sort of thing. But I, I personally have the opinion that that's something that's allowed under the open meeting law.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm now reading my own handwriting. What was your third question? This is what happens when it's a quarter till 11.
Incorrect factual information, and should the planning board correct it? That's what I wrote down.
So we have, we've actually not deliberated on this, on our opinion. So, you know, without everyone being here.
So that's the problem that the warrant committee represented in its comments, that we had made decisions. And so that's now going to be in the warrant. And it's.
Well, we have, there's things that we have been discussing that we talked about.
So.
No, but we, what our recommendation is, we haven't voted. So I guess I would want to have, I would want to know, I'm not sure what was not factual. I don't know that I heard anything that wasn't factual, so.
I don't know if you got a chance to read their comment.
No, but he referred to what Eric's asking about facts. I don't know what specific items.
Yeah, because I, okay.
It wasn't factual because I will agree, I've heard from different people, different various things that aren't incorrect. So I'm not, I don't recall hearing anything that was not correct. I think there were questions of the board, I don't know, but.
Yeah, so just, just a couple, putting aside the number of new units. There were claims that there would be, you know, no affordable housing, which again, the zoning article does have an affordability requirement that understandably you're trying to increase, you know, which I fully support and agree with. And then there were two committee members who cited a letter by two residents that they presented as evidence that was filled with factual inaccuracies. And I, you know, would be happy to provide a list of them in writing, but they ranged again from that claim about no affordable housing to Melrose not being a rapid transit community, even though Oak Grove is in their, their town boundary, which it's not. So it just seems like there's so much conversation happening that isn't grounded in facts. And someone should be responsible for making sure the information is there. And I'm not saying that, you know, I know that town staff and the select board can't be everywhere at every meeting, but it seems like the public isn't being served when there is such clear, factually incorrect information out there that people are citing when they are making their decisions about whether to support an article or, you know, recommend for further study. I just, you know, would really encourage the planning board to lead on this. So it is the best article that gets presented at town meeting and the decision is being made by fully informed residents.
So Eric, I do, I just want to reconfirm, this is a select board article. So the select board is going to be presenting this and presenting all the facts. Tim will most likely be taking the lead on that. So the select board and Tim will be presenting the facts at town meeting. So that is, that will be what will be deliberated on. And town meeting members will deliberate, they will ask questions. We'll be there to answer questions as best we can since we have been working on this. But, but the information will be presented at town meeting for, by the select board because it is the select board article. So we're not going to be presenting on this ourselves.
Yeah, understood about that. And I, I don't mean it to be like the planning board ought to select, present the select board article because it is coming from the select board.
Right.
But I hope that, you know, if, if the, for whatever reason, the select board doesn't pick up on, you know, something that's, that's misstated or not contextualized, that the planning board, as the experts who have been spending all of this time, and there's no shortage of time that has been spent on this, as you guys all know, it just seems like the planning board is uniquely positioned to also answer those questions or make those clarifications.
Yes, and I think four out of the five are town meeting members. So I think everyone, I expect, I would, you know, any of my, you know, fellow board members to feel free to, to speak at town meeting as well. If they, if there's anything that they want to address or clarify, I would, I would certainly expect that.
I am concerned about some of the comment in the comments, you know, if you will.
But is it that, is this really our job?
Yeah, but it, no, and it's because it's saying the planning board said this.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's their comment. But when it's saying the planning board said this, and this is the basis of our recommendation, is these planning board comments? I don't know if you've all read them, but like it says that.
Is there something that?
Well, it says right here that areas of concern with the select, select boards article have been voiced by several members of the warrant committee and in part echoed by some members of the planning board include the disproportionate burden placed upon the residents of Granite Avenue, East Milton, lack of new units when, within one half mile of the Elliott Street corridor.
Those are all things are public record.
Yeah, but that's factually incorrect because it's more than.
No, it's not, those are on public record. We have stated that again and again, if you've listened to our last meetings. We've been concerned about Granite Avenue, 530 units on Granite Avenue.
Yes, but.
That is factually correct.
Oh, it's, can I finish? Like, the compliance model shows more than 50% of the new units within a half mile of the train stations. And the balance is Granite Avenue, East Milton. It's not disproportionate that there are, that there's a lack of new units in a half mile of the.
But that.
I think that that is disproportionate personally.
See, that has been stated, that has been stated.
That's my opinion, I think that that's disproportionate. I think putting a thousand units between East Milton Square and Granite Street is disproportionate. So, so what, so what are we going to do about that?
Saying there's a lack of new unit capacity in the Elliott Street corridor is factually incorrect. So if the planning board members are saying things that are factually incorrect, we just have to have put a chart up.
It's an opinion of a planning board member, it's not, it's your opinion that it's factually incorrect.
So what are the facts here? I don't, I'm losing it.
What, is 50/50 equal to you?
50/50 is exactly equal to me, is 60/40?
Is 54 and 46 equal to you?
It's damn close.
Right.
But they're not equal, they're not equal. To me, it's not equal. So anyway.
We're not going, I don't want to get into this, but I think that the, the warrant committee has been watching our meetings and taking, and there have been comments that have been made, which are opinions of planning board members. That, that is what I'm hearing that is, that's being reflected in those statements. So whether you think that's accurate, we all have different opinions. We have five different opinions really on our, you know, when we have this discussion. So I don't want to get into the weeds on deliberating this tonight. But I do want to talk about it and I think we should have, you know, some sort of a recommendation. And I'm happy to express a minority opinion or a majority opinion. I'm, you know, it's, this is, town meeting will, will be deciding this. And it's, and it is the select boards article that they're putting forth. I appreciate, Matt, you know, everything that you, you're saying. And, and part of what the discussion will be is if we are asking for an extension of time, which we have, what will be our goals in asking for that? If we do make a recommendation to, you know, for example, send it back for further study, what is our, what is our goals and our expectation, I think should be part of that. I think that's very, very appropriate to give that answer to town meeting as well.
And also, you brought up a good point, Matt, about managing consultants' time. So we haven't hired a lot of consultants, but personally, we've never managed them. And I don't know if that's something we should be doing. I don't know if it's historically been done. So even with this East Milton, so we have currently doing, we're doing the East Milton consultant. And previously, when I first got on, we did the Milton Village. So I personally didn't manage the East, the Milton Village. So I personally didn't manage the East, the Milton Village consultants' time. And to date, I haven't had anything to do with the East Milton consultants' time. But that is a good question and so maybe we need clarity on that. So I don't, I feel like it has not fallen on the planning board in the past year and a half on our shoulders to manage.
I would point out that MAPC came to us at least twice to review what their work plan was and asked us to approve that work plan. And I asked and they sent the slide deck in advance of the public forum. So if we had any questions about their work plan and their schedule, they've given us opportunity to, to provide comment on it at our meetings where they've been here.
So I think to, Matt, for timeline and to, just to address, because I think this is what I would say misinformation out there, that we've had all of this time, that January 2022, we started to talk about this. We knew that the MBTA zoning act had been, was in place and that towns, you know, were going to be asked to comply with this. What, what the important piece of why we're asking for more time is the HLC, which was DHCD at that time, took an entire year to write the guidelines. So we, there's no way we could have started doing zoning without design guidelines. So once they finished writing those guidelines, then they sent it to, then they sent it for, obviously for a comment period. So that would put it like October 2022. So we complied by having our action plan by that, by last December. And then.
Can I clarify what you're saying there?
Yes, because we really just started actually working on, in January. And then we did not, I'll just finish, we did not get the first set and we had been requesting our consultants to come. We didn't get the first, like districts based on what our, what we were studying and sort of the direction that we're going until June of 2023. So that was our first time we saw the consultants work.
I think what I'm trying to say.
You can come up, yeah. Because this is, we're all working to try to get this, you know, pulled together, so.
Just for the record, because I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to be on the record as unfairly laying this out there.
Yeah.
What I want to say is that I think the deadline of December 31st, 2023 was presented at that time. So my, what I'm trying to say is you know, there was, there was a known deadline and this process to work up for it. And I hear a lot of, of statements saying, you know, that we just need more time, we just need more time. And I get that it's an aggressive deadline, right? But it was, it was my, what I'm trying to push you for here as a citizen is to say that knowing that that deadline was in place for quite some time, you know, how do you, how do you back that up, right? How do you get there? And so that's what I'm suggesting, you know, as we work forward, understanding that the planning board is not going to issue any, anything for this deadline. If there is a future deadline, it's my hope that we can be more, more aggressive about that. That's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I think UTIL wasn't really, if I looked back, wasn't it April 2023 was when we got the scope of work from UTIL? I was trying to go back in my emails and I think it was not till April 2023 that we got confirmation, yeah, we got confirmation that UTIL was our consultant.
Yeah, I would have to double check that too.
I'd have to double check. I know there was a public forum, February of 23, that the planning department conducted, you know, all of the, I went back and reviewed all of the prior presentations to see these questions about these other parcels that we looked at and why they were discarded, such as, you know, on Randolph Ave or at Fuller Village, et cetera. You know, so I went back to kind of look through those and recall. And so, you know, the, so there's that public forum, all of these are on the town website. And then there was the, the May public forum, but presentations, Tim did some presentations that were informed by the work of the consultants. Remember, we had MAPC doing work as well.
He was trying to do, yeah.
Yeah, and then at some point, we invited UTIL to come in themselves and start doing the presentations. But, so they were doing work before they started coming in and doing presentations, you know, themselves, right? So they, you know, the May one was where they, they looked at the entire one half mile transit area on my screen here.
Yeah, we have, we have work from UTIL dating back to March.
Yeah, so it was just that they weren't at our meetings. It was, Tim was kind of explaining the models. Because like, we have here at the May meeting, it fully tested compliance models showing, you know, districts and showing, you know, heights and what kind of modeled capacity we were getting and what kind of density and how we weren't hitting 15 units an acre at that time with those. And sort of starting to understand, you know, what these districts, the parcel sizes and everything, how to inform us. And so we were working, you know.
Yeah, we've been working, we have been working on, and I'm.
Wouldn't it take like a two week turnaround every time we talked to UTIL? Would we have to wait two weeks?
Yes, and we also had 111 Highland.
So personally, I hear what you're saying, Matt, but I feel like we have put in a lot of time. And again, we're volunteers. We have full-time jobs and meeting twice a month as well as having other hearings. I just think that alone, plus just having two staff members and Julia, so three, that's why we need more time. To compare us to cities in Brookline, which is a town, which we've repeatedly said have staff of 30, full-time, you know, full-time, not consultants. I just think it is a burden on us. And like for me personally, I couldn't have given any more time. I couldn't. If you want to talk to my family, you know, it has become a running joke that they don't want to go to family dinners because they have to come and listen to MBTA zoning. That's their excuse to get out of family dinners. So my family will, you know, argue that, that we haven't worked hard. So I'm going to defend our board to anybody who says we have not done, that we've done a disservice to this town. I take great offense to that, actually. And we just can't. We can't do it. And I think it's unfortunate that they have not responded to our request of more time. If the state really wanted to work with us and work with towns, they would have responded to us. So yeah, I'm really annoyed with the state and they're not helping, they're not helping us. And that's why I don't really care what the state has to have to say, quite frankly. And that's just my own personal opinion and there are five of us. And that's just mine and I've been very vocal about it. And we're volunteers. We all have our own businesses to run and we sacrifice so much time. So I will, I will defend all of our work to anybody who asks.
I think, thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Appreciate. And Eric, was there a follow-up question that?
No, no, I just, I want to, you know, appreciate what Member Oldfield just said. I, you know, it is not easy to spend all this time here. I fully recognize that everyone here is a volunteer. I don't know that any comments I made or that, I don't want to speak for Matt, but what I heard from him wasn't so much that we're critical of the planning board's lack of time spent on this, but there have been comments made in other meetings and again, by the warrant committee again, which you're not responsible for what they say. But it feels like there's blame being put on RKG, you know, for being late when, you know, I think that there were some assumptions built in by having the maps done by a certain time. And so then it feels like the buck is being passed to RKG rather than there being an acknowledgement that there's a lot of moving parts here and that because the information wasn't provided to RKG, whether the planning board had that information or not, it just seems like it's, it's being, we're blaming the consultants. And I don't think that that's fair to them, but I don't think that's fair to anyone here either who has spent a lot of time on it. So I just wanted to hopefully clarify that, say thank you again for all of your time. You know, it's 11 o'clock on another Thursday night and all of you are here and I appreciate that. So hopefully that clarifies that.
Thank you. And I don't, I don't think, I, hopefully, I, we didn't, we're not blaming the consultants. It's more of, these are the facts that we just don't have, we're not at that point that we have this information. So maybe that, you know, just to be, make that clear, no one's blaming RKG there, but we just, we just don't have the information because it's taken us so long and we're actually still working on our districts. You know, we're not really complete with that. So thank you very much for coming and your questions. So I think that is all on the agenda for this evening that we'll need to get to. And with that, I'm going to, we'll have, you know, hopefully when Sean's back, we can have a further discussion and deliberation on a recommendation. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second? You both said at the same time, so.
She's got it. I'll take the second.
All right, all in favor.
Aye.
Good night all. Thank you.
Thank you.